Welcome to tonight's meeting. I'd like to call the order the September twenty second, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Bellingham Planning Commission. Heather, can you please call the roll?
Hi, Kestis.
Here.
Jed Baloo.
Here.
Rose Lathrop.
Here.
Barbara Plaskett.
Here.
Scott Jones.
Here.
Russ Whitby.
Here.
Mike McCauley.
I'm here with some technical difficulties, but I'll do my best. Okay, we'll call it six and three quarters attending tonight. I don't believe we had any minutes for review. So welcome everyone. Tonight's meeting has one agenda item. We're doing a public hearing on revisions to the city's regulations around accessory dwelling units or ADUs. We'll probably use the acronym ADUs all night, but before we, so we're gonna have a presentation from staff. We're gonna hear from the public formally on the record about their thoughts on ADUs in that public hearing. And then the commission's gonna talk about, have a discussion about that. Tonight will be the main, the only night to get for the public to give commentary on the record to the planning commission about this ADU update. We will be continuing to accept email correspondence for the next couple of weeks. We have a follow-up work session on this topic on October twenty seventh. Before we kick that all off, as we do every week, every meeting, we have a general public comment period. So if any public attendees on Zoom would like to speak to us on topics beyond ADUs, we'd love to hear that now. So go ahead and raise your hand in Zoom with the button. And we would entertain some general public comment.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
Oh, hi there. Yes, so my comment is on the ADU. So I just wanted to clarify, do I say that now or in the public hearing window of time?
Probably better to hold that and wait until staff has given their
Okay.
Then you'll have some need to to comment on. So that was a great time for anything outside of ADUs. And we'll have a space for anyone else to jump in on ADUs later. Any other general public comment? Not seeing any hands. We'll close the general public comment period and open up our public hearing and we will start things off. I'll hand it over to Chris Behe to introduce tonight's agenda.
Great. Thank you, Commission. Good evening. Again, I'm Chris Behe, your long-range planning manager. And with me tonight is planner Chris Cook, our planning director Blake Lyon, and development services manager Kurt Nabothell. Chris is our accessory dwelling unit expert and the project manager for this code update. We bring you this topic in response to direction from city council. Last year, following the ADU threshold review, council directed staff to develop a draft ordinance with a range of amendments aimed at improving the ADU standards, streamlining the approval process, and providing consistency with state legislation. Before the hearing starts, Chris will provide a brief overview of our ADU code and a summary of staff's recommended amendments. And as the chairman just indicated, we will reconvene on the twenty-seventh for our work session on this topic. So this is just the chance to hear public testimony on the proposed amendments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I'm going to share a screen and see if I can put up this PowerPoint. And okay, can everybody see that?
Yep. Looks good.
Okay. And does this one have the notes on the side or?
Which no. No, we just see the main slide full screen.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, again, this is looking at our update to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Let's see if I can move this along. So this is largely a staff-driven project. It's based on administering two hundred and twelve accessory dwelling unit applications since mid two thousand eighteen. And then also discussions with staff, architects, owners of ADU, developers of ADUs, and neighbors of projects with ADUs. Recommended changes. We're looking at maintaining what's working, fixing what's not working, and streamlining efficiency. And excuse me just a second, I got something messing with my screen. Okay, I think I fixed it. So first, when I go over the outline, what we're gonna be covering versus what is an ADU, then followed with background, why we're reviewing this now. Also look at accessory dwelling unit opportunities and concerns. Then we'll finish with the proposed changes and next steps. So what is an accessory dwelling unit? Early twentieth century, it was a common feature in single-family homes. By definition, it's a small self-contained residential unit that contains its own bathroom, kitchen, and sleeping area on the same lot as an existing single-family home. It can be an apartment over a garage, or in a basement, or in an outbuilding. They're also referred to as granny flats, in-law suites, secondary units. They go by a number of names. Now with post-World War II suburbanization and deployment of UCLIDian zoning, ADUs became far less prevalent. If anything, they became outlawed. And so it was rare that you saw them in recent times up through the nineteen nineties until they started being seen as a viable housing form again. Now again, they can take many forms. They can be attached to the primary residence. They can be detached from the home. They can include a garage with ground floor living space and living space above, or they can take the form of a traditional carriage unit where it's entirely above a garage. As far as opportunities that ADUs provide, they provide housing choice, financial benefits to the homeowner, new investment in existing neighborhoods, housing affordability, caretaker function, especially for elderly. They also have provided fiscal benefits to the city by making more efficient use of existing utilities and infrastructure. There's also a number of concerns about ADUs. And that's a lot of them are potential impacts on neighborhood character, potential illegal units enforcement, potential parking and traffic impacts. And there's design issues. Now, when we went through this back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we updated the ADU ordinance at that time and we took quite a deep dive identifying the opportunities and concerns around accessory dwelling units. And actually, that work started in about two thousand fourteen and was tabled while we updated the comprehensive plan in two thousand sixteen. And then we re-engaged it again in two thousand seventeen. And so accessory dwelling units have been part of our discussion, a common discussion for quite some time in Bellingham. And with these concerns here, what we have been finding is that since two thousand eighteen, we have had a remarkable increase in the number of accessory dwelling units being applied for and permitted. But what we have been finding is that we're really not seeing any of the concerns manifesting. We're seeing minimal complaints or concerns from developed, approved, developed accessory dwelling units. So why are we reviewing this at this time? Within that two thousand eighteen ordinance, there was a threshold review that was required, that was adopted with that. And it required a city council review by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, or when the city issued two hundred detached ADU permits citywide, or when the city issued twenty-five detached ADU permits in any one neighborhood. The Sunnyland neighborhood reached twenty-five last year. And so council conducted a review in July of last year. With that, they confirmed the city's continued support for accessory dwelling units and detached accessory dwelling units. They directed staff to bring forward a range of amendments to improve ADU standards, permitting process, affordability, and consistency with state regulations. And a summary of their review is found in attachment C in the staff report. So it's been a year since council's review. And another approximately sixty accessory dwelling unit applications have been submitted since that time. So these are the numbers right here as of July twenty of July of this year. Sunnyland is at twenty-nine detached. And these are just detached accessory dwelling units because that was really the subject of that threshold review. Because it was in two thousand eighteen that detached accessory dwelling units were first allowed in single-family neighborhoods. So again, Sunnyland is at twenty-nine now, Columbia at twenty-six, Cornwall Park at sixteen, Virtuwood at fourteen. And that represents approximately half of all detached ADUs approved in the city over that time period since two thousand eighteen. Also, when we look at it in terms of both attached and detached ADUs within that timeframe, since two thousand eighteen, there have been two hundred and twelve applications submitted, seventy-one are for attached ADUs, one hundred and forty-one are for detached ADUs. So it's roughly a two-to-one ratio of detached ADUs to attached ADUs. Seventy percent of detached ADU applications are in residential single-zoned areas. And seventy-five percent of all ADUs, both attached and detached, have been in residential single zones. So the yearly average of ADU applications has increased from seven before two thousand eighteen to fifty currently. That's what we've been processing on average over the last four years. These maps show the distribution of those detached accessory dwelling units that have been applied for and approved since two thousand eighteen. You can see that there is a a band stretching through the Virtuwood neighborhood, Columbia neighborhood, Cornwall Park, and Sunnyland. And then there is a bit of a pocket down in the Happy Valley neighborhood. When we add the attached accessory dwelling units that have been applied for or permitted within that timeframe, those are shown in purple. And interesting, there is a more of a concentration of those on South Hill neighborhood, presumably because of the sloping property and the amount of basements in that area that readily allow for attached ADUs. This next map shows all the ADUs, both attached and detached, since two thousand eighteen with zoning. And a summary on the table down to the right, it's showing that approximately one hundred and fifty-six of the two hundred and twelve are in residential single-zoned areas, thirty-five are in multifamily. Again, roughly a two-to-one ratio of detached to attached accessory dwelling units. This last map, that shows all accessory dwelling units that have been applied for or approved since accessory dwellings were first reallowed in Bellingham in nineteen ninety-five. So there is approximately three hundred and forty citywide. So again, revisiting the wide view now, the demographic context. Baby boomers began retiring in two thousand eleven. And the chart here shows that basically since two thousand to two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, census information is showing that our aging population is growing at quite a fast rate. And that is also depicted in this graph where you can show that not only is that aging population of over fifty-five going at a faster rate, it's becoming, it's becoming a larger percentage of the city's population. So it is increased from roughly nineteen percent in two thousand to twenty twenty-seven percent in two thousand twenty. Also, other demographic context issues, the number of students that live in Bellingham with university, community college, technical college, shrinking household size. And these are all demographic that are, that accessory dwelling units are attractive or as a housing form. Yeah, and the shrinking household size, seventy-one percent of Bellingham's households consist of only one to two people. The millennial population is growing. Diversity. Accessory dwelling units are attractive for low-income families. Also, the city adopted a rental registration and safety inspection program in two thousand fifteen. And so all accessory dwelling units are registered through that program. The city also adopted, again, the comprehensive plan, updated it and adopted that update in two thousand sixteen. And with that update, it, the comp plan reaffirmed, reaffirmed support for accessory dwelling units and other forms of innovative small-scale housing. So what is being considered for update? This update, it intends to improve regulations for accessory dwelling unit standards, permitting process, affordability, and consistency with new state legislation. So next, I will go through what's specifically being proposed. And this will be in order of what you see on attachment E in the staff report. First, recommendation is to approve accessory dwelling units through administrative type one as a right process. First, which, which, what is currently reviewed through a discretionary type-two process. Type-one process is typical of just a building permit. That is, all that is required for a standard single-family home or an accessory detached accessory building such as a garage or shop for a single-family home. Type-two process requires a public notice be mailed out to surrounding property owners within five hundred feet of the project. All the property owners surrounding can provide public comment on the proposal. Staff takes that public comment into consideration, drafts a staff report with any conditions and issues that decision. Once the applicant has that decision in hand, they then apply for a building permit. So again, that, that type-two process is not required for a standard single-family home or detached accessory building. Second, a proposal would be to remove language that could be construed to discourage or limit accessory dwelling units. There is language in there that often, not, I'd say that often enough concerned citizens, concerned neighbors will write about how an accessory dwelling unit is not appropriate for their neighborhood and they're relying on this language to justify that the accessory dwelling unit is not appropriate and should not be approved. And again, this is an issue where single-family homes go through a type-one process, detached accessory buildings. They go through a type-one process. They're permitted outright. There is no such language like this with regards to those building forms. Staff believes that removing this type of language would be appropriate for the accessory dwelling units. A third one would be to, proposal would be to remove occupancy limit for state law. State passed legislation that households cannot be defined by a number of persons living in there. And so basically, this would be making the change to be consistent with recently adopted state law. Fourth item, remove would be to remove owner occupancy requirement in all zones except single-family. So again, approximately seventy-five percent of all accessory dwelling units applications that we're receiving right now are in single-family zoned areas. This would relieve that requirement of approximately twenty-five percent of units. Number five, remove the access and site area requirements for detached ADUs to establish consistency with attached ADUs and accessory buildings. This one needs a little bit of explaining. Accessory, attached accessory dwelling units can go on any single-family lot in the city. There is no limitation. There is no limitation for detached accessory buildings. They can be located in the rear thirty-two feet of the property, up to a property line, up to a maximum size of eight hundred square feet, as long as all other zoning provisions are met, such as setbacks, open space, height limits. There is a provision requirement on detached accessory dwelling units that in order to qualify for one, a lot must front on a alley or more than one street, or the lot must be larger than five thousand square feet. Staff finds that that is not necessary, given that attached, attached accessory dwelling units don't have any such restriction. And detached accessory buildings don't have any such restrictions. Basically, detached accessory dwelling should have the same freedom to basically be built, provided they meet the underlying zoning requirements. Number six, proposal is to allow attached or allow accessory dwelling unit size up to one hundred percent of the primary unit or eight hundred square feet, whichever is less. With this, current, I'd say currently, the size limit for accessory dwelling units is two-thirds or sixty-six percent of the size of the main residence or eight hundred square feet. This would increase it to one hundred percent. The reason for this is, there's many reasons for this. Basically, the current regulation acts as a small house penalty. If somebody has a small home that's only nine hundred square feet, they cannot build an eight hundred square foot ADU. It has to be, it would be limited to sixty-six percent of the size of that nine hundred square foot single-family home. Where, on the contrary, anybody with a large home, say fifteen hundred square feet or larger, they can build a a accessory dwelling, up to eight hundred square feet as a right. So again, this would provide consistency and equity between what people can build on their property. And also in light that, just even accessory buildings, somebody can build an accessory building up to eight hundred square feet as a right on their piece of property. Number seven, for dwellings that are five years or older, proposal is to not limit the size for basement accessory dwelling units. Currently, there is a provision in the accessory dwelling ordinance that allows for a split-level home to basically exceed that sixty-six percent limit. If it would result in conversion of an entire basement of a single-family home, but it would still be limited to that eight hundred square feet. There are a number of homes on South Hill, Alabama Hill, Puget neighborhood, you name it, Samish, Samish neighborhood, where basements have been built historically. Some cases, they're, they're larger basements. They're underground. They present no outward or minimal outward manifestation of the floor area because they're under the building, embedded into the ground. So staff is recommending that when it comes to converting a basement to an accessory dwelling unit, an attached accessory dwelling unit, that can exceed the eight hundred square foot limit. As long as that basement has been in place for at least five years. That five-year limit is seen as a minimizing code beaters where somebody would intentionally build a large basement with intent of converting it in the future. Five years is often a, a period that, you know, there's there can be a change in homeownership, change in plans of how to run a home. And so we're, we're pretty comfortable with that. Number eight, a proposal is that the base accessory dwelling unit floor area calculations on zoning code, okay, hold on. Then, number eight is, the proposal is to base the ADU floor area calculations on the zoning code applicable to the primary residence. Currently, all detached ADUs are required to use the general floor area definition, regardless of the housing type that they're built with. The issue is we have two different floor area definitions. One is a general definition that applies to all infill housing toolkit, housing forms, such as cottage housing, townhouse, small lot. It also applies to the commercial zoning as such. Then we have another floor area definition that applies to just single-family, standard single-family homes. And so this would basically be a code cleanup and provide consistency such that when you build a standard single-family home and you're proposing a accessory dwelling with it, you'd use the standard definition consistent with that home that you're building. If you're building an infill toolkit housing type, you use the floor area definition applicable to the infill housing. Number nine, proposal is to allow up to a two hundred square foot bonus for a maximum detached ADU floor area of one thousand square feet when the bonus area is a garage. Couple of reasons for this. Again, on single-family lots, one is allowed to build detached accessory buildings such as a shop or garage up to eight hundred square feet outright. And there's no limit on the number of detached accessory buildings that someone can build on their property as long as they meet all other zoning standards such as setbacks, open space requirements and such. So this would be a intended as a a incentive for someone that's building a detached accessory dwelling unit to consolidate a garage. for someone that's building a detached accessory dwelling unit to consolidate a garage with that in that building so that you don't have multiple buildings on the property. And again, it's an incentive to hide that parking instead of have open parking on the site. Uh, number ten, uh, puzzle to allow conversion of oversized accessory buildings approved through a conditional use permit. To an ass- to accessory dwelling units after five years without additional conditional use permit approval. Uh, and currently for single family development. One can build a detached accessory building up to eight hundred square feet outright. If you want to go above eight hundred square feet, it requires a conditional use permit. At a type three process. Uh, also requires a five hundred foot mailing radius to surrounding neighbors. And that is evaluated or heard in a public hearing before the hearings examiner. The hearing examiner makes the decision on that. And so that building goes through a pretty rigorous review process for potential impacts to evaluate potential impacts and provide mitigation. And so as time evolves, if a property owner or new property owner decides that uh, they would like to convert that accessory building to a detached ADU, um, this would allow that and it would allow without going through an additional conditional use process. And it would have a five year uh, stipulation that be, you know, when one is approved, you can't request that conversion for at least five years. Again, with this, the accessory dwelling unit itself could not exceed eight hundred square feet. Uh, these are the last five recommendations. Um, next one would be to add a five year wait period to convert an accessory building built at the property line to a detached ADU. Again, you can build on a single family lot, a accessory building up to eight hundred square feet. It can be located up to the property line outright in the rear thirty two feet of the property. There are no design standards. There's a, there is a height limit of one story or twelve feet. But there is, there is no requirement to get an agreement from a neighbor or anything like that. And so this would establish a five year wait period. Provided that, you know, there's a change in um, ownership or change in how a person wants to use their building before they could convert that accessory building at the property line to a detached ADU. Uh, number twelve. Uh, this applies just to detached ADUs. Uh, the proposal is to retain the twenty foot height limit. For detached ADUs, uh, it is measured under height definition number one and add a twelve foot option. Under height definition number two. Uh, currently just detached accessory buildings are limited to twelve feet or one story. This would add that provision for two detached accessory dwelling units, giving a little bit more flexibility on how a detached ADU could be accommodated on a piece of property, especially on a sloping piece of property. Uh, number thirteen, the proposal is to reduce onsite parking requirements when available on streets. Park, when parking is available on street or the accessory dwelling unit is close to transit. This would provide consistency with, again, another recently adopted state regulation that, uh, requires reduced parking within a certain distance of transit. And number fourteen would amend the design standards to allow detached ADUs to be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. Rather than specific to the primary dwelling. So it's gonna give a little more flexibility in design for detached accessory dwelling units that they currently, they are required to match the design and character of the primary residence and by minor modification or departure, they, they can ask to deviate from that. This would allow that deviation to occur outright. Again, looking at, uh, just standard detached accessory buildings. Up to eight hundred square feet, they are allowed outright on a piece of property. Without design standards. This would provide some consistency with that, but again, uh, it would be retaining some discretion to ensure that that design is within the character of the surrounding area. And arguably, there are some single family homes out there that you don't want to mimic the design. And so this would more readily uh, allow for deviation from that. Last one would be to, this is basically just a cleanup. It would remove the threshold review language. Uh, the, the review was completed in twenty twenty one. There is no requirement for additional review. Council did not express an interest in a additional future uh, threshold review. So this would remove that language and remove any potential confusion of public or designers reading that thinking there might be still some future review. So that concludes my presentation. Um, there's any questions of me? I'm, I'm available.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, given that we have space tonight for commissioners to ask quick one questions and then indicate, um, things to look for more information on. I think it'd be best to just move straight to public testimony right now, and then we'll have the rest of the evening for commissioners. So yeah, with that, we have a follow up work session on October twenty seventh, Thursday. We're gonna continue to accept written comments, um, after tonight. Up until October twenty fifth, which is two days before that hearing. Um, for the public tonight is your likely your only opportunity to speak to the commission, um, on the record about this topic. So now is your chance. Um, this process will all repeat as usual at city council, um, a few months down the road. So you will have another opportunity to engage with this before it's actually voted on by the council. But if you, um, would like to give us feedback tonight on the topic of ADUs, now it would be a big time to raise your hand in Zoom. And we will open the floor. Uh, we'll do our, our typical, um, ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes. And please, only go once. Heather, we can start bringing people in and we could probably stop the screen share for a bit.
Trying to get out of that. Go up to the top of your screen, Chris. There we go. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Dan.
Am I on?
Yep.
Uh, thank you for allowing public comment during this period. My name is Dan Welch. I run a small design architecture firm, bundle design studio here in Bellingham. Um, we've done a number of ADUs over the years. Um, right now we have at my count right now, we permitted twelve. We have about another five to eight in design right now. Um, so quite, quite a few. Go through what we really support upfront, um, support the elimination of land use application. Um, we have had very little comments that come through and this has just been a huge time suck for both uh, clients, us as a design firm, and then also city staff. Um, we just don't see that it's providing a lot of valuable feedback. Um, and so eliminating that and going to a regular review is similar to a single family residence would be great. We support the elimination of the parking requirement, elimination of the threshold review. Um, elich- elimination of the site access requirements and lot side requirements so that we can get ADUs onto lots smaller than five thousand square foot easier. Um, and also elimination of the occupancy limit. Um, some of the things that we do have, uh, comments on. One is design review, um, and that is part of the land use application currently. Not exactly clear where this review would happen if the land use review goes away. Um, but we would like to see architectural consistency removed from both architectural consistency to the primary house as well as the surrounding area. Uh, again, we've done a number of ADUs. We have many more in design and we have yet to have a single client. Um, that wants to have a house that looks like their neighbor's property, their property or the surrounding neighborhood. Um, everyone wants a property or a new ADU that is more of keeping with the times, both as far as aesthetics as well as, um, the way it performs. Secondly, we'd like, uh, an increase in the building height. We do a lot of ADUs within historic neighborhoods and one of the most common ADU types is a carriage house. Because of the single family parking requirement that will still be retained. Um, this makes a second floor ADU extremely limited. Um, and so we would like to see that building height increased to about twenty five feet and this will allow for more options with building form, square footage allowances within that second floor space. The third one we'd like to comment on is, um, the conversions. Building prices right now are extremely high and everyone's having a hard time affording building anything. And so what we are seeing more of are people that want to build accessory buildings such as a garage or a studio because they don't have enough funding to complete a full ADU at that time. However, they do have plans in the future to convert it to an ADU. And we don't feel that those clients should be penalized for five years to turn that into an ADU. So if, as long as there's a process that the accessory building is designed to the, to meet the ADU ordinance, we think that those buildings should be allowed to be designed um, and converted immediately as soon as those, uh, clients have money in the future. Um, ADU size, uh, we support the one
If you could wrap up in like thirty seconds, we're close to time limit.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I will skip some of those others too that I wanted to comment on real quick. Um, one is homeowner occupation. We support the homeowner occupation for the single family neighborhoods. We just feel that there could be speculative rental development within those neighborhoods if allowed. However, one thing that we would like is some allowance for if a family owns more than one house and ADU, we have a few clients that have like two houses and two ADUs. One's owned by the kids, one's owned by the parents. So if those parents pass away, the kids are forced to sell the other portion of their property. And we'd like some allowances for what happens in those extenuating circumstances. The last one, I know my time's up here, um, but it's a big one. That hasn't been discussed at all is fixture count. And this is a little bit different. This is outside of, uh, planning specifically and has more to do with public works. But the fixture count permit fee is one of the most costly permit fees when developing ADUs. It's a seven thousand dollar charge if you would see the point based system for the number and type of fixtures. And it encourages dishonesty in the permitting process. So that people are trying to avoid those additional fees such as cutting off all the hose bibs off their house and such. So if there was another process to, to discuss fixture count and, and to provide permit fees on that, we would really like to see that. Thank you.
Take it.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Shannon or Sharon?
I apologize. Yeah, go ahead, Shannon.
Yes, Shannon Maris, I'm a residential designer. I've got seventeen successful ADU permits. They had eight that canceled and I probably get three times that amount for inquiries. Just to let you know, they're probably the most popular thing I get asked for and they're also the most difficult to permit. Um, I was also reminded to let some or to let the people listening know that my background, um, besides being a residential de- designer, I worked in the Happy Valley neighborhood housing committee to get the pilot project for the Happy Valley, um, detached accessory dwelling unit. So I've worked with Chris and Rick Sepler and Wendy here on this. I've got a bit of background. I'm thrilled that the success for DADUs um, has been well received and is working because that was our intent. And in the interest of time, I have two points. Um, the first one being hands down, the design standards have been difficult, uh, with homeowners to match existing house style. And although they were well meaning, they were ineffective in the intent of maintaining neighborhood character because that new construction or accessory buildings or additions have no requirement for design. So really it ends up being a discriminatory rule for DADUs that they have to match neighborhood character, but nothing else that's built in the neighborhood has to. So I'm glad to see there's some, um, readjusting on there. And then that, the parking, thank goodness, parking is a huge issue. We end up making huge amounts of parking to meet this standard parking requirements of twenty two foot backup spaces and alleys that aren't wide enough. And not parking in the front setback and can't park in the side setback. So even huge lots are needing like a full lot just to take care of the parking requirement and have them meet the rules. And then the third point is that five year restriction for converting existing accessory buildings. I have homeowners who are planning for retirement. But they're not there yet. So they're building a home office with the intent of it being an ADU when they retire. I also have families that have built COVID rooms for teenagers who are gonna leave for college. And so they're thinking, once the kids leave for college, then they can turn it into an ADU. Elder care of parents is another huge one. People are planning ahead for that. Um, and I support Dan's position on cost of things. People are building what they can or when they can, when they have two incomes. And, uh, planning on completing it later. And so the five year restriction really seems like a deterrent, A, number one, for somebody planning ahead and two for trying to help people establish or trying to help neighborhoods establish alternative housing styles. Especially DADUs in their neighborhood. This is kind of that half step that people are able to do and then finish it later. But they don't need a kitchen, a full kitchen in there now. So thanks for everything that you're doing and I'm excited with this process. And if I can help in any way, let me know.
Thank you, Shannon.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you for letting me comment. Um, I would like to comment on the owner occupancy rule whereby we are not allowed to rent out our home and our ADU at the same time. I've lived in my home in Sunnyland for over twenty years with my family here and this is our home. We have an ADU here. Just briefly, in, in Bellingham, we all know the number of rentals does not meet demand and the prices are unrealistically high. Thus, the supply and demand is in crisis. The city of Bellingham house rules are supposed to help people and I feel like the rules are incredibly restrictive and they are outdated. And they definitely do not support single family residents, homeowners who have an ADU. So our current situation, a consequence of this rule is that we, my mother is in England. We need to leave for an extended period, period of time to take care of her and we do not want to leave our home vacant. Plus we can't afford to leave it vacant. But, um, at the same time, we have our elderly tenant in our ADU. And so under the rules of owner occupancy, our only option right now is to ask our elderly tenant to vacate her home in our ADU. To go live somewhere else, possibly as in Sunnyland, if she can stay near her family that's, that's two blocks away from us. So that we can theoretically move into the ADU, making it our primary residence and thus rent out our house, our house. So that it is not empty and we can afford to pay for the bills. This will though also leave the ADU empty. But that's not as bad as leaving our house empty. So our concern is where would our tenant go? She currently, all her bills are in her rent, her family's around the corner. She's in her eighties. This would be a huge impact on her uh, financially as well as inconvenience and many other ways. It makes It makes absolutely no sense for us to move out of our house into our ADU. Have our tenant leave so that we can rent out our house and our ADU is now vacant. Where it should, everything should be able to be rented out and help the situation in Bellingham. We're not investors. We do not want to sell our home. This will always be our primary residence. But I feel very, very strongly, and I know a lot of people do, that we should be able to have flexibility to rent it out. Of course, we want to be responsible and keep the characteristics of the neighborhood. So it would not be a permanent rental. It would be somewhat of a temporary or up to 12 months at a time sort of permit that allows homeowners. To have some flexibility. If our ADU was, for example, in Ferndale or Seattle. Or if our ADU was a genetic rental, we would not have this dilemma. It seems like it's an obvious discrimination against homeowners of single family residents in the city of Bellingham. If the goal is to increase available housing at a realistic price, the current homeowner occupancy rule. Is actually limiting the number of rentals that are available. These are all in highly sought after neighborhoods that have access to schools, access to downtown, into open trails, et cetera. All within walking and biking distance. So.
Could wrap up in.
Yeah, I was just about to wrap it up. So in order to help the crisis here in Bellingham, it is. It is necessary in my point of view to open up this restriction so that homeowners can rent out their homes. You know, for up to 12 months at a time and I'm requesting that we lift this occupancy owner rule.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, hi.
Try hitting the mute.
No, he's okay. Go ahead.
We're good now.
All right. Thank you. My name's Jack Wellman. I'm a resident of the Sea Home neighborhood. And this is my first time giving public comment. I want to speak tonight in support of the proposed ADU amendments. I think anything that we can do to increase the supply of housing, particularly housing types that are more affordable like ADUs should be welcome. I do however, want to speak on one particular aspect of the proposed changes and they're the same as the previous speaker. And that's the owner occupancy requirements in area zone residential single. The proposed changes remove this requirement from all other zones, but not the zone where, as staff just reported, 75% of ADUs are built. So I'd like to ask the planning commission to consider removing all owner occupancy requirements. Personally, I can't think of a good reason for having these requirements other than to have the effect of discriminating against renters. And reducing the supply of ADUs in these desirable neighborhoods. I believe that all residents, regardless of their ability or desire to build a home, should be able to live in all parts of our city. And I think ADUs are a great way to work towards that goal. The effect of this language as it's written, in my understanding, makes it more difficult to build an ADU because. As the previous speaker was saying, if a home is being rented out, the primary residence, then an ADU can't be built. Because then the landlord would have to live in either the ADU or the primary residence. So again, the effect here is to reduce the number of possible ADUs built. And notably, it prevents a scenario where a renter lives in the primary home and a different renter lives in the ADU. So this seems to go against the spirit of these proposed changes, particularly in the area of affordability and equity. Please consider removing the owner occupancy requirement and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jack.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Yes, this is Wendy Scherer and thank you for your work, Chris and the planning staff for your. Work to propose improvements to Bellingham's ADU standards. As a member of AARP and Chair of the Happy Valley Neighborhood Association Housing Committee. We've worked collaboratively with both Chris and former planning director Rick Sepler to write the. Current detached ADU standards over about five years ago. We have supported ADU initiatives, have been working with the ADU statewide leadership initiatives. Led by Sightline Institute, Washington Realtors Association and the Washington State Chapter of AARP. On supporting these new ADU regulations. Since the detached ADU ordinance has passed, we've had positive experience with ADUs in Happy Valley. We are the largest housing, most housing diverse neighborhood in Bellingham with over 7,000 people. ADUs are seen here as a popular option as living spaces for older relatives, extended families. Rentals for students and others, spaces to age in place as well as providing rental income. To owners who live in one of the units. We approve the proposed amendments being considered this evening with a few comments. About the topic raised about equity and affordability, specifically the owner occupancy requirement. We support retaining the ADU DADU owner occupancy requirement in the residential single areas. It's been a very important value for our neighborhood. It was kind of a deal breaker in our larger, single family neighborhood zoned areas when we tried to work to write the original DADU ordinance. Several folks let us know that if an owner is living in one of the units on the property, that they would approve the ADUs. We believe that benefits of the owner occupancy requirement would be, one. Oversight of the second unit and their occupants would happen. Renters are more conscientious and. And problems can be solved quicker when the owner lives on the property as well. Number two, speculative developers, realtors and privately financed individuals. Wouldn't buy the most affordable land and houses for the purpose of a dual rental income or to flip the property at a higher cost. After adding an ADU or a DA, DU in our neighborhood. We've actually seen that happen. And three, changing the rule in all zones except single family would allow time to see. How dropping the owner occupancy affects the multifamily neighborhood zones that are predominantly single family in character and housing type. And four, a homeowner has lived on the property and in the neighborhood will probably be more aware. And sensitive to the site and neighboring properties versus someone buying to develop property to maximize rental potential. So those are my points and I'll send that in an email to the planning commission also. And we, we really thank you for your work on this topic.
Thank you, Wendy.
Go ahead, Derek.
Hey, Derek Long, proud member of the Welcome Housing Alliance Steering Committee. Thanks to staff and planning commission volunteers for their time this evening. I was on the task force for ADUs in 2014 and 2015. In 2018, the Welcome Housing Alliance urged the planning commission and city staff and city council to stretch beyond. The idea of just an ADU pilot in the happy family or Happy Valley family neighborhood. And, and make it citywide. And I'm sure proud and glad we did. Because with 50 or more new homes a year added to our city. It's making a lot of people's lives better. So here we are in 2022. We're going to do the same thing as the Welcome Housing Alliance and we're going to encourage staff. And planning commission and city council to stretch further than the current staff recommendations. The reasons for stretching further are, I'll just, there's so many, but I'll just focus on two. One is, as the staff has reported, four years ago, the change was made and very, very, very few negative comments. Have come across. The sky did not fall. And so the other point I'll make to support this case to stretch further. Is that the housing crisis in 2022 is worse than it was in 2018. So the Housing Alliance has submitted a letter to planning commission for public record, but I didn't see it show up yet. So we'll resend. But we support staff's recommendation to allow ADUs by right using the type one land use permit. The Housing Alliance believes it's time to drop the owner occupancy requirement in single family zones. It is just too important and our concerns over the negative aspects are overblown. Just like they were in 2018 when we asked people to stretch. We want to support the removal of off-street parking requirements. We want to encourage the creation of pre-approved plans. We want to revise development regulations which includes removing the 66% size restriction. We want to increase the roof limit from 20 feet to 25 feet to help accommodate more roof types. And we want to revise the device, the design standards. So I appreciate your time again. Happy to stay involved in this process and. Happy to resend the comments from the Welcome Housing Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Hi, Nancy Waterman. I am one of the first people that got a. DADU permit back in 2018. And it has allowed me to build something where I could age in place because I no longer needed my. Three bedroom, two bath house that I've owned since 2000. Couple of comments, taking away the fixture count, revising the design standards. The, taking away the land use fees. And that process and allowing higher roofs. I am all for, I wish those had been in place when I built mine because. My house would look a lot more interesting than it does. The other thing that I fully support is owner occupied changes. I would. Like others, like to see it extended. I'm lucky. I live in the Fountain District. So I think I will come under the new rule if it's passed as written. But I look around, I walk all the neighborhoods around me and whether it's owner occupied or not. You can't tell from the outside due to how the house is kept, how the yard is kept. I think that the cost of building. The, a house and a detached ADU for speculators is too high. They can do much better with some of the things like what we have on the guide right now with those type of rentals. As opposed to being in a single family neighborhood. I just don't think it's going to pencil out for them. So I don't think there's going to be a huge influx of that. I, right now, I've been struggling because until this passes, I can't leave my home. To go on a year long trip as I wish, like Vanessa was talking about, to be away from my house. I can't afford to have a house empty. I wish I could. I can't. So I think that having an owner occupied. Leniency or even just having it going away altogether. Seattle has done that. They eased into it. And I don't see any big difference down there. So I think. That's, that's my biggest point is to take that away for everyone. Because I think it's hindering the process. All the other things, I'm all for and thank you for updating everything.
Thank you, Nancy.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Hi there. I am Nicole Miller. I am representing TC Legend Homes, builder, designer, developer here in Bellingham. We have quite an experience working with clients on building ADUs and DADUs. There just continues to be a ton of interest in it. I just want to quickly say that I really second what Dan and Shannon, our first and second speakers had to say. As well as Derek Long. I think they spoke really well to all of the points that we also feel. I would however like to second what many of the people are here are saying on the owner occupancy. I think that it is important for owners to be able to. Not occupy and be able to rent out. Because we see such a demand for rentals. Of course, there is the concern with big. You know, rental corporations coming in and wanting to rent those out. But I think that the demand is too high and that we need to be looking at that. But yeah, I, I really second the fixture count that Dan was talking about, the. Changing that, the DADU height limitation to 25 feet, not the 20 feet. And removing the design restrictions in regards to the exterior looks as well. Yes, and thank you guys all for what you're doing.
Thank you, Nicole. Impressed by the number of amateurs that come in it. Too many 30 seconds, you'll practice. Any last call for any public testimony on this topic? Okay, couple more hands, we'll keep going.
Go ahead, Jay.
Click, you're still on mute, Jake. There you go.
Okay, yeah, we have a ADU. It's part of a purchase we made. Our neighbors next door, who are friends, were being evicted. So we went over and talked to them. And when we found out, we found that we were able to buy the property from their landlord. And then rent the property to them at a friend price because they didn't have a lot of money and we had a little bit more than that. But they, they had an ADU on their property and we are. We are using it as a, the dwelling, we can't rent it out as an ADU since we don't live on that property. But it would be something that we could do for someone to rent that to them. Presently, our friends that are next door are allowing the person in the auxiliary building, so auxiliary dwelling. Which has all the same amenities as an ADU, except it can't have any kind of cooking. Device. It can't have a microwave or a stove or even a hot plate. So that means that at times this renter, that they're subletting that to a renter. And that renter then has to go back to the main house to get some. To do any cooking and then go back to this ADU that's perfectly, it's a beautiful building. It has a view of the bay. It's, it's just a lovely looking building. Except that it's, it's so limited by this cooking requirement. So it would be nice if there were some flexibility and as far as owner occupancy. The odd thing is that it's on our property. It's in a different premises. The property has two premises. And, but it's one big property. It all belongs to us. So we're actually, it's. We see it out the one, the bedroom with the kitchen window, see a bedroom window. It's right out there and we're doing, we see it when we're doing lawn and. And doing the yard work all around the house. So it's. So it'd be nice for everyone if we could get rid of this owner occupancy requirement or at least ease up on it and make it more flexible. Thanks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jake.
Go ahead, Craig.
Ah, yes, Greg Torock. I, me and my wife just recently got approved for a attached ADU. For our new home that we're planning to. Build here in the coming year or so. And I learned about this change coming and I. You know, strongly support these, these changes. Couple of reasons. One is. A couple of years ago, my wife and I started looking for property in town where we could, we could convert. Either a basement or some space on the property to an ADU. And with the housing supply so tight, we found it that every house that we looked at had serious challenges. In trying to develop an ADU on the property. And I think some of these changes will make more house, more existing housing stock viable for ADUs. Specifically remove, moving the, the size limit up to 100%. That makes smaller houses more attractive for developing an ADU on the property. And also the basement conversion size limit. We looked at several houses. Couple of years ago where it just wasn't practical to subdivide the basement down to 800 square feet without having some. Really weird unusable space down there. Also, so then we decided to build and we designed a house and designed it with an integrated ADU. Meeting every single code and what we've learned through that process is that we really support the move to, to a type one permit for the ADU application. The type two permit is needless, I think needlessly onerous, both for the city and for the applicant. And yeah, and I would support that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, thank you, David Stahlheim. First off, I'd like to thank Chris Cook for putting this together and answering the questions that I had at the last minute. And also last year, we had some conversations about this. And so in general, I very much support the direction that the city is going and that Chris has drafted with this. My last job before I retired, I rewrote the development codes for the city of Everett. And one of the things that we did was to really look at the issues that didn't make sense in the code. Ask the question is, why is that there? Does it really make a difference? And so while this is really good, there's a couple of things that just still don't pencil for me. So first off, if you built a detached accessory building, it's important to recognize that the definition of height is 20 feet and it goes to the average of the gable. And so you can actually build a structure to the top of the peak of the roof, probably pushing 28 to 30 feet. And I can show you within a stone's throw of my place, a couple of buildings, our neighborhood that are detached buildings, accessory buildings are probably pushing 30 feet and they're really, and they're permitted as one story. And so the question is, is, it really is, and they're fine, those things are fine, but it really gets to do with what is the impact on the neighborhood? So if you can build a detached accessory building to that height, if you can build it into the setbacks, whatever, then why can't you convert the upper floor into an accessory dwelling unit? And many of the changes here are doing that. But my example on my property is I have a 24 by 24 garage. And so that's pushing almost 600 square feet. In order to finish off the upper floor, because I have a steep roof, I have to go through these gyrations of figuring out what is the floor area. And it just doesn't make sense there at all within the limits here. The impacts of the neighborhood really is the, the size, the bulk of the building, what's the footprint, what's the tall height of the building? And once you get through that, the floor area and having to go through all those iterations of calculations, just doesn't make any sense. So a very simple fix is to change the bonus from 200 square feet when you have something down below up to 400 square feet. And that would address garages that are 24 by 24. But I think there's actually more fixes that really need to be done within the code because a one story building is not 30 feet in height for detached buildings. And so if we're going to allow detached accessory buildings to get that tall, and I think we probably should, let's call them what they are, and they're really one and a half story buildings. Finally, I want to talk about the owner occupancy and affordable housing. I'm kind of on the fence about owner occupancy. I think there's good points on both sides. But well, one thing struck me is that the staff comments is that they couldn't take on the affordable housing requirement, which was a council request in exchange for owner occupancy because of the time allotted for that. Well, the reality is that it takes the same amount of time to enforce affordable housing restrictions as it does owner occupancy. So the original council request to, to waive the owner occupancy requirement for affordable housing, meeting 80% of area median income should be one of the compromises that should be on the table for discussion. Thank you much.
Thank you, David.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. If you can hear me, this is Paul Schistler. Think, yes, I appreciate the, all the hard work that's gone into this and I actually support most, most of the changes you're recommending. So kudos to the staff for that. I do though, have some real concerns about the proposal, really not doing one of the things that the council asked the staff to do. And that's to address affordability or improve the, the council directed staff to come back with a draft ordinance with a range of amendment options to intend to improve ADU standards permitting process and affordability. So I think we're, we're going the wrong direction on affordability for a couple of reasons. If we don't require owner occupancy, we're going to convert all these properties into better investments for people who look at homes as an investment for profitability and for capital gains. Homes that will be on the market will be purchased by commercial investment interests who can outbid the people who would prefer to be an owner occupant. So I think we should have public policies that encourage owner occupancy or encourage primary residences as much as we can, when we can. And you can do that with the ADU owner occupancy requirement. If you remove that, you're going to convert a lot of properties into better investments for people who are not intending to live there. Wendy Chair made some good points about why owner occupancy is still a good thing. I disagree with the Wacom Housing Alliance on this point and I appreciate the good points on both sides. But I think if we're trying to deal with affordability for over half of us who live here and can't afford to live here, can't afford the home we're, we're in. Half the workers can't afford the home they're in, but they have to pay it anyway. Then we should try to address affordability directly, not by just increasing the supply. I'm sympathetic about people who need to be away but plan to return as their primary residents. So what we do in the communal land trust world is we say, people can, can make a request and if it's a legitimate request, then, then that, then it's, then it's approved. If someone needs to be away to care for a family member or, you know, go to college or whatever the reason might be, but is intending to return to, to live in the property, then it could be leased while, while someone's gone. That's, that's reasonable. But to convert all these single family, so-called single family zones into better investment opportunities and discourage owner occupancy, I think that's heading in the wrong direction. And actually, it will make the affordability problem around here much worse. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, hi, my name is Scott Odell. I want to say I agree with removing the owner occupancy from the single family listing, just because you were talking earlier about how wording and everything can be restrictive to the whole thing. It's holding single family homeowners with ADUs or DADUs hostage in the fact that like one person said earlier, if she wants to leave for a year, she can't because she can't leave her home unoccupied for that length of time. I would think that the city would look at to what Paula just said. There should be some, I guess, a way for the homeowner to come in, say, hey, we're going to be gone for a year. We still are the homeowner, the occupancy. We love Bellingham. We're not leaving Bellingham. We're just going to be gone for a year. We should be able to rent out our home at that point in time for the year and then come back and we're still the homeowners of the occupant. So we're falling within the rules of Bellingham. We're still the homeowners. We still occupy our house. We're just gone for a year. But in that time, we should be able to rent it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So is this, is this Sam again?
It's Dan, yep.
Okay, Dan, I hope I didn't catch your name. Dan, we typically don't allow repeats, but if you have a point you forgot, we'll let you make a, make a short pitch, but
okay, I'll keep it under 30 seconds here. Obviously, a lot of comments have come in on affordability and from our side of things, affordability is a double edged sword. First, you have the investment for purchasing or building a property. The second is just operation. And so one thing I would strongly encourage planning to look at is to allow an additional bonus for any projects that are designed and constructed to a certification program that exceeds energy code and aligns with the City of Bellingham Climate Action Plan. There's numerous out there and I don't think that it should be any specific one, but there's zero energy ready homes, passive house, built green, those kinds of things. That would encourage, especially if we open up a homeowner occupation, if that goes away, to give some incentive to encourage people to build better buildings than the cheapest building that can possibly be built for rentals. Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, final call for public comments. And again, we will be accepting, we've gotten about, as of this afternoon, a dozen emails to the commissioner on this topic and we'll be accepting more and expect to hear more from the public via written email comments until October 25th. So seeing, not seeing any further hands, I will go ahead and close the spoken testimony of the public hearing. And move on to commissioner time. What I was hoping to do, what I was thinking of doing for the rest of our time is taking a look at the key issues matrix. Those are the forms at the bottom. There's 15 points. We could go through and talk about the 15 different topics. Some of them are small and like cleanup related and we probably don't have a lot to talk about. There's some meatier ones. What we're largely looking for tonight is things that you're, need more information about or confused about, want clarification about. We can have a little dialogue with staff in the moment. We can also have staff come back with more information at our work session meeting. There's also probably topics that aren't in that list of 15 and I have a couple written down myself. I think we can save those for the end and, and people can highlight things that they would like to see more information about. We're not really looking tonight for like everyone's preferences and which way they're leaning and all that stuff. I mean, free to talk about however you like, but the work session is where we're going to get into ironing out which way we should fall on some of these key points and what we end up making our recommendation to council on. So does that seem like a good approach? Any, anyone want anything different? Okay. Diving into it, can, I can, or can staff share the key match, issues matrix and start us on the first page? I'm looking at page 33 on my packet. It'd be nice to have that on screen while we go through the key points. While we're getting that going, Mike, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm going to ask a question about number 10 on those points.
Yeah, well, we're going to go through in order. So why don't we just go through them one by one, starting with number one, and we'll get to them. We'll dive in just to kind of keep things. I'm sure people have some common questions around each topic. Okay. Looks like Chris has got it. So issue number one, the type of permit, type one, type two administrative permitting versus a little bit more notice and review. Questions, clarifications? Go ahead and just dive in if you have thoughts.
Well, one of the things that we heard is that there's been very few complaints on ADUs through this process. And if there are complaints that are coming out through this process, like what is the nature of those would be kind of interesting. I just, I assume that it's true and in public comment and, and, and then in, in the staff's write-up, it was very few. And that's great to hear. But just curious, what, what are the issues that there are?
Kurt, if you can respond to that, since I think you have approved most of the permits and are, I think, aware of that.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Kurt Knabfeld, the Development Services Manager for the Planning Community Development Department. I think maybe, Rosa, if you could, could you clarify your questions? Are you, are you asking the nature of the, like the public comments that we hear? When we're doing the, when we're doing the noticing or the complaints that we hear after a permit is issued?
Yeah, well, because we're looking at number one, I'm thinking of the approval process and for, it seems a logical step. And what would we be missing if we got rid of it?
Yeah, I think, you know, from the types of comments that we receive when we do do notice, it really can probably be boiled down to rentals in my neighborhood. Parking, the, the parking traffic, the increase in parking traffic. And this assumption that there's a conversion of residential single to multifamily zoning by allowing additional units. That, those are probably the top three that we hear. Occasionally, we'll hear, we'll hear some about the size or the scale, the design. But it really comes down to parking traffic and unmanaged rentals, if you will.
Thank you.
Similar question, actually, what Chris was talking about this topic is when you receive those types of feedback, what do you end up doing and how does that end up affecting the project? This is, type two process has less teeth than a COP type three process. Do you ask the proponents to change the design or do anything with changes to parking? Can you actually enforce changes based on what the feedback is?
Yeah, it really kind of depends. You know, you know, sometimes we'll hear the complaint, well, I don't want rentals in my neighborhood. Well, you know, the response to that is, you know, the, the city council has adopted rules and regulations that allow for rentals in, in single family known or neighborhoods through the ADU process. We also don't prohibit people from renting anywhere in the city. So we don't manage that type of scenario. So you know, just not wanting to have a rental in your neighborhood is something that we personally can't regulate. You know, one of the things that we do here is if we have a departure or request to, to waive the parking requirement and people say there's, there's parking issues on the street or there's traffic issues on the street. We will have the applicant go out and do a parking study to actually look at what the, the parking is on the site or around the area on the street. And we can, you know, have factual based information on it to, to determine whether or not one additional car on the street is going to have an impact. Most of the time when we do have, require those, those parking studies, we find that there's ample availability for street parking.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on topic one? Jump in, Joe.
I was just thinking about the, you know, there's a couple of items in the ADUs that relate to like character of the home, you know, it being appropriate for the neighborhood or the existing residents and then also like not encroaching really or, or being a burden to the, the neighboring property. I'm just wondering if there's cases of where the type two process maybe catches things that reviewers wouldn't catch otherwise, like, oh, the window is going to be right next to my bedroom window or something like that. Is there any fear of losing some kind of like extra eyes on the process by getting rid of that type two?
I, I would add there that currently for, you know, detached accessory buildings, again, there, there are no design standards for detached accessory buildings, whether it's a garage shop or living space, a art studio. You can have bedrooms in a detached accessory building and a bathroom. You just can't create a fully self-contained dwelling unit. You can't have a kitchen in there. So you, you can have something built as a right with windows facing a neighbor's property that we cannot regulate because we don't have design standards on detached accessory buildings. And so this is, is attempting to
This is is attempting to again achieve some parity between what's currently allowed outright and what's. Being regulated with detached accessory buildings.
But but it is correct, though, that there will still be language for the ADUs that are relative to character of that ADU. As well as its effect on the neighboring property.
Yes. Yes. That that there there will still be language. To ensure that there is compatibility between the detail, the design of the detached ADU and surrounding. Character of the community, it just does not have to be. Strictly in compliance with the design of the existing home.
Jed, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on on one part of your question they asked that I that I think I heard. And that was, you know, if we get rid of the the public notice and that and that process, are we missing out on? Something that we wouldn't have already known and and I can, I'll say that, you know, the public involvement process is a very important process. In the vast majority of land use planning. One of the things that we do is we make sure that when we're crafting the rules and regulations, there's a robust public improve or public process involved in that. Such as tonight, we go out and we do public hearings in front of the planning commission, we do public hearings with the the city council, so. When we create those rules, you know, we're really trying to to hear a lot of what the public has to say about that. And then basing those on our our comprehensive plan goals and stuff like that, so the public involvement process is pretty is a pretty important step, but. Just as we have done for single family development for. Short plats or subdivisions up to four lots or infill toolkit homes up to four lots. We've we determined that there are some. Review processes that don't need that level of review. Some of them for conditional use permit processes or for very, very large designer your projects. We do want to hear from the neighbors so that we can understand, you know, those specific impacts that may occur. But for some of these other projects such as, you know, a subdivision up to four lots or an infill toolkit project, we don't require that level of degree anymore. We as a city have determined that we don't need that level of degree for some of these kind of minor. Types of permits, so. Public and public process is really important, but I don't think it's needed on every single thing. And that's one of the things that when we go back in and look at what we what the types of comments that we've seen, where are those comments actually? Showing us an issue or something that requires mitigation or we can amend the permit to really benefit from. It's just very far and few, we just don't see those very often, and so that's why we're really deciding to push forward and. Reduce the the public review process at those individuals specific times, but encourage it at this point.
Mike?
Thank you, I don't, was it? Was it Kurt? No, it wasn't whoever brought up the point about. The accessory, the accessory buildings. So. I'm. I'm very interested in the, you know, the idea of consistency. Not just from a design standpoint, but just from. You've got an accessory building. What are you doing with it? And. The idea that a person could live in in an accessory building is okay with no, you know. You can build that in setbacks. You can do a lot of different things without sort of design standards. Which is inconsistent with. If that person was cooking in that same exact space, then there would be a completely different set of rules that. Are seem seeming arbitrary, so I I think for me that the consistency needs to be corrected in this. In this process. That's it on this thing.
So Mike, you're talking about, you know, an outbuilding, a typical outbuilding and and accessory. Building minus the dwelling word. And that we've heard that the difference, you know, you can have a bedroom and a bathroom and a garage. Up against the lot, eight hundred square feet, no need for any of this regulations to enter the picture until you bring on a kitchen sink and a stove. So are you asking why there's a difference between those things or it can? Something be done to the dwelling unit, the the accessory building side of things?
No, no, not asking any questions right now, just want to get. Basically on the record to say, look, there needs to be consistency here because. In in one sense, it's actually easier to put a car into a building on your property than it is to put a human in a building. On your property, and if we're talking about. Making space for humans that's more affordable than. It it needs to be at least as easy as it is to put a car on your property. That's the consistency that I don't think, you know, we're really getting to, and I want to just make sure that we're at some point going to have that that conversation.
Okay, that's interesting. Other thoughts on topic one or before we move on to? The next one. Okay, and if if you think of stuff, we can, we can circle back. So number two is removal of language that talks about the appropriateness of ADUs. Any? Questions about that? Third one is. Compliance with state law, removing the occupancy limit, seems like we're sort of. Doing that. Unless we go down to Olympia, check our fist, so any comments on those two sort of code cleanups? Otherwise. Item four, bigger issue, owner occupancy. Who wants to go? Chris?
Yeah, I just want to get clarity that ADUs are the only housing type. That have a owner occupancy requirement or. Any situation like this, so like if. There's a duplex on a single family lot, those can both be rented and that's okay. Just clarity there.
If Steph's welcome to to bring back responses at the the fallout meeting for things that are. Are bigger or require a little bit of research, but I don't know if anyone has a. Response to Rose's question.
Was that a question, Rose, or was that a a statement? It sounded like a statement.
No, I I just, I I mean, I think this is true, but I'm not sure, but I I wanted to make sure that it's true that. ADUs are the only housing type that have a owner occupancy restriction.
Yes, that that is true.
Jed?
Yeah, I guess someone, one of the callers had mentioned that Seattle has lifted this and maybe other jurisdictions have lifted this, so I just I'm wondering if. The results of of that difference has anyone analyzed kind of like what? What's occurred in those other places?
I I can chime in on that, Portland. Back in the time that we were updating the AD ordinance in two thousand eighteen, they do not have an owner occupancy requirement and. There was an extensive study at that time. Of what what that has resulted in and. I recall that the finding was that. Majority of the homes. Continued to be owner occupied, ADUs are a very popular form. Of housing. To own. For the many benefits that it has for taking care of an aging parent or. Having. College age kids living at home and still having some. Independence, there there's many benefits and so. Even though owner occupancy isn't required, there was a, I think, a surprising amount of the homes that had ADUs. That actually retained owner occupancy.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, along Jed's line question, if we have similar examples from Ferndale or Seattle or Portland or some of these other regional. Areas that have made those kind of changes, if you have those at hand, maybe maybe we could have additional information. At the next meeting. Mike?
All right, sorry, a little slow there, I'd like to. I think on this point, again, anything I say, I think this evening, it's really just, you know, food for thought for our next deeper conversation. The owner occupancy issue, thank you for the answer on on what happened in Portland, it's. It's, I I don't think there've been enough studies in the past and, you know, explaining. What happens when you don't have that because the rules, I think most folks here might know that the the rules were a bit arbitrary and have been for a long time because of how people feel. But there wasn't a lot of information about what. The reality was, so I'm glad that that somebody has looked at that, the question about the duplex is it's it's something that there's I've wondered about for. Way too long and. That brings up the question for me, though, is is a duplex by definition is is a a house with with two apartments in it, so. If you've got a single property with with two dwelling units or slash apartments. How's that different? Just, I mean, typically, we 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 look at duplexes without the owner occupancy requirement because they tend to mirror each other. But that's not really anybody's definition, it's just two dwelling units per piece of property, so I think the idea of removing that restriction is a solid. A solid path forward. And I would question why we're not looking at doing that in the the residential single as well, so sort of just across the board. Look at that, so I'd like to have a deeper discussion of that in the future. Thank you.
The, Mike, you've worked in our director, Blake, did you want to chime in on that?
If I might, just for your context, on page seventeen of your packet. There's a reference under. Item four, which talks about the ownership and occupancy and in particular. Subnumber. Parentheses A, there you go at the bottom of the page, and it says, in the event of illness, death, or other unforeseeable events which prevents the owner from continuing. Continued occupancy of the premises. The director may upon finding that the discontinuance of the ADU would cause a hardship on the owner or tenant. Grant temporary suspension of owner occupancy requirements for a period of one year. Director may grant the extension of such suspension for one additional year on finding of a continued hardship. So just to respond to and make sure you're aware of what is, you know, currently in the in the ordinance. We do have some consideration and accommodation for some of the comments that were brought up this evening where if somebody had a need to. Leave the country for a year or something, they have this opportunity to bring that situation before. Staff and myself as the director would have the opportunity to review that and consider that, so. I don't, I don't intend to bring this to your attention to bias the conversation one way or the other, I just wanted to simply draw your attention that that language is in there right now. And make sure that you have the opportunity to consider it, whether you prefer it or whether you want to exclude it and make sure you had that information.
Thank you. I think, I think that was very helpful, I think Mike was also asking about kind of like. Where, why are we drawing the line between, you know, a duplex or two units on one property and and ADUs and.
If I can also just give a little bit of context around that issue. As it pertains to state law and local zoning code. When you have an accessory dwelling unit. It does not count against density, so we have currently in our land use comp plans, we have certain density allowances within different. Neighborhoods and different areas, when you have a single family home and an ADU that is consistent with this ADU ordinance. It doesn't count, it just still counts as a one in terms of the the number of units on that particular property. When you get into duplexes, triplexes and above. You have to consider the density implications and make sure that there's a consistency in that regard, so. There is a, there is a allowance that's given to the ADU, it does not count against that density requirement. Right or wrong, that's the way it's structured.
All right. Mike, did you have a, Mike, did you want to keep going on the same topic?
Yeah, I just a quick follow up and again, food for thought, thank you for jumping in on that, the the density question. Reveals a problem, right, because at some point, we're gonna run out. Right, and I don't know when that's gonna be, I think people can predict it, but. But but I think this this concept of of, you know, the density, it's always going to be something that has to be changed in the future. As reality strikes, which is more people are moving and more people are moving here and and you can't prevent people from doing that, so. You know, if we're, if the density question needs to be addressed. To make, again, these rules or regulations feel more consistent, fair and reasonable. Then I think that might be something that we should talk about as well, and and if we're pushing up against state regulations. I'm totally comfortable on doing that, so thank you.
Barbara?
Yes. Um, I just on the duplex topic, I'm wondering if lot size has anything to do with it, just as a side note. But the other thing I wanted to go back to was Portland. When they did this study in Portland, did they talk to the renters? And I'm wondering if they collected any documentation or any kind of stats on. The price of the of the rentals, you know, how much people were charging and. Whether the ADUs actually did achieve what the goal of them was, right now, it just sounds to me like we are hearing from a lot of developers and and landowners. But I haven't heard from a lot of renters whose lives were, you know. You know. Helped by this, so. I'm I'm wondering if we're if we're only getting half of the story at this point.
Yeah, that's that study of that Portland did, and I think it was Portland State University that did it. The. Owner occupancy. Matter. Sorry about that, I lost my train of thought. It it did not, it interviewed the owners of the ADUs, my understanding is it did not interview the tenants of the ADUs. It it covered a pretty broad range of information including. Incomes of tenants and. Also who those tenants typically were and. Again, they they were trying to get an idea of, you know, to what extent. There was affordability being provided. And the finding was that in in many cases, these were homeowners that were renting to friends or family members or. Other parties. In many cases at reduced rates at. Their discretion, you know, it's their choice. It's it's something they believe in. Not all property owners are trying to maximize their income on rents and so. It it should, there is a a pretty broad range of of. How the rentals were being provided, whether they were at market rate or at a discounted rate or for free.
Does there also some part of the study that talks about ownership of these properties too, like? You know, we're hearing these stories across the country about corporations. Taking on buying up small, you know, family homes and things like that and then renting them out. Keeping these out of the hands of, you know, the average person. And then how many of these houses, I mean, how long was this study done? From the time that they, how long has it been since the time that they stopped doing the owner occupancy till now? And how many of those houses have changed hands in that time? And then how many of those homes have changed hands into more of a corporate or a? You know, a for-profit type of situation rather than a family or, you know. Different kind of situation, I'm talking long term down the road right now, in the right here and now, these things all sound great, Danny, but. What about ten years from now or twenty years from now, who's gonna own all these homes with all of these ADUs?
Yeah, I don't recall to the extent that it covered the. owners that had multiple ADUs, multiple properties. But I, I could provide a link to that study on the city's ADU webpage so that, you know, other people can look at that and see what the findings are.
It would be helpful to me if you could send it to us too.
Okay.
Yeah, that and any other related, you know, research in the, of, of other pilot projects in cities around the region. That'd be great.
You know, I, just to chime in a little bit on this, I was doing research on this topic, curious about that impact because there's a lot of concern about it and wanted to see, there are cities all across, like Vancouver, Washington, Olympia, Ferndale, all don't have a owner occupancy requirement. And I checked in with planners at each of those cities. Granted, they're all fairly newer ADU rules. And so, you know, and, and it wouldn't be fair to utilize Portland as an example anymore because they allow two ADUs on a, on a single family's lot. And so when I checked in with some of those smaller cities that are more comparable to our markets, the planners there didn't have studies or research that they had done, but anecdotally, they had said that primarily they were homeowner-driven projects. I think the cost of construction and just the return on investment isn't there for speculative builders.
Along those lines, I had a question on this. Well, last time I looked at this, I remember seeing research and about a complication with banks and loans for construction on ADUs and that, you know, if a homeowner has the, has the resources to build an ADU outright, you know, they're, they're good to go financially. But someone who would typically get, have a small amount of down payment and want to get a construction loan to build an ADU. My understanding was banks are pretty wary of ADUs because it's a new product and also because of the owner occupancy requirement. When you typically get a construction loan, you know, the bank is thinking, if this goes south, they are able to take ownership of the property and continue to operate it until it can be resold. In that situation, the financial lender would not be able to rent out both units and achieve, you know, market compensation at the period of time that they have to hold this property. So what have you seen from people trying to get APUs from the city in terms of their ability to finance the construction of the ADU on its own? And is that something people are achieving financing for or only people who have, you know, the financial means to construct it outright, able to accomplish that? The question is, is owner occupancy a barrier to financing in any of the examples you've seen?
Generally, we don't get involved in the financing side. And so I do not have much information to provide you on that. I think anecdotally, we have heard some, some comments that because of the owner occupancy requirement, there is some hesitancy to loan on an ADU because if they have to foreclose on a piece of property and they maintain it until they can offload it, they cannot readily rent both units in the interim.
Right.
If I can also chime in on that a little bit, and Chris is absolutely right that while we don't get into the direct financing and lending of individual applicants, I think one of the things that I just wanted to reiterate that you heard tonight was some of the kind of cost impediments that existing property owners are facing when they look to build those ADUs. And we heard, just to reiterate a little bit, we heard a little bit about the fixture count concerns. Derek mentioned, and this is certainly something that we've considered at the staff level, about whether or not there's an opportunity to do pre-approved plans or other things to help streamline that process so that, that if you do have a property owner that either has the means to pull equity out of their property or has other disposable income where they can do that, how do we take that barrier to providing this housing stock down to a point where it becomes more attainable for a larger percentage of our community so that we can bring this housing, you know, option to, to the market in a more meaningful and realistic way across a broader spectrum? So while we don't get into the specifics of whether that's an owner occupancy issue, we are trying to consider how to, to minimize or break down some of those barriers to entry. Cause right now, what we're seeing is with the type two process with some of the other building code requirements and other construction materials and supply chains and things like that, you really have to have a reasonable nest egg to kind of crack that project open, carry it forward. And if we can, if we can chip away at some of those pieces, then we could make this a more viable option for more people.
Yeah, that was my, my concern. Thanks for addressing that. Rose?
Yeah, just to say, I'm in my ADU right now, very proud and did not get a construction loan. They wouldn't do a construction loan. I had to do a HELOC on it to make it all happen. But the question I have is about enforcement. I know that this has been a challenge on other issues around the city, you know, the rule of three, all these others. And so I'm curious, like, has ADUs become more prolific throughout our community? How are we going to continue to main, keep enforcement of this? And you know, if we were to continue with the owner occupancy requirement, how do they, how are you going to enforce that?
The occupant, or I said, the, the enforcement component right now takes shape kind of in one of two ways. Either we have complaints that get registered and they're brought to our attention by maybe citizens or other members of the community that are drawing that to our attention. And we have, you know, code enforcement staff member that brings that to bear. Or if we have it maybe coming up more on the building inspection side where we're either going through the rental registration program and they're doing inspections or we're going through a permitting process and we're finding something that's out of compliance. And the city's approach to both of those situations really has been more one of trying to get voluntary compliance. By that I mean really working with those that are finding themselves in that situation, making sure that they understand their expectations, the rules, requirements, and then give them the opportunity to bring that into, into compliance in a timely and meaningful way. When that does not occur and we've exhausted our efforts that way, as it's currently structured, we have a couple of code enforcement officers in the police department and we'll refer the cases over and they'll go forward with some form of greater pursuit of that prosecution of those issues. So part of what we'll need to think through from a staffing perspective, depending on where we land on these issues, is whether that current structure is sufficient to address some of these needs or do we have to amend some of that or somehow augment our current processes? So that is certainly something that we're well aware of, but we need to understand where we're going to land on some of these issues before we can make any structural changes.
Thank you. We're at nine o'clock. I propose we take the next two hands and then take a five minute break. That's cool with everyone? Scott, go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. Two things, this is kind of a food for thought, but it can be discussed or answered. I was wondering about with the pressure for owner occupancy going away in single family neighbor, single family neighborhoods, I'm wondering how will the removing of the owner occupancy help the community anyway? Because it's not going to increase housing stock because there's already a family in the main home and family in the secondary ADU. And so that's one of my concerns about removing it. It doesn't really help with any type of housing. And then on top of that, it was just discussed about enforcement. I've heard it before. It came up in the past and there just is no reason to take away some sort of ordinance just because there might be a challenge in enforcement. The challenge should be faced head on. It's not a reason to negate a rule just because it's difficult to enforce.
Thanks, Scott. Mike? You're muted, so. Mike?
Oh, how about now?
There you go.
I hit the lower hand, I didn't hit the mute. Scott, super valid point on the enforcement thing, not going to argue against that. I think I'm going to add a little bit to it though, and this is, this is something that, that came to my attention early this year where a person has, has purchased a home here in Bellingham, it's in the Columbia neighborhood, there's an illegal DADU out back and the, the enforcement of that problem has been challenging for the city of Bellingham to the point that it hasn't even been looked at in a couple of years. And this whole problem for this new owner stems or goes back to a previous owner and it's now about five years old. So I, I think that enforcement is one thing, but the ability to staff the enforcement program is also something that needs to be considered and discussed. And if there's a change that either needs to be made to the rules because they're literally just not going to be enforced, because there's no, there's no real concern or there's no staffing or it isn't a big enough problem that even though the rules on the book, that we're really going to take too much time out of our day to enforce that, we've got other things to do. And, you know, I, I get it, I understand that. So I think, you know, again, and I'm going to say this a lot during this conversation in the, the coming months, which is consistency is really critical here and the things that we aren't doing because they're just not going to be done and that will never be done, then we need to acknowledge that and address that and either say, yeah, it's just not going to happen, so we're going to make a change, or it is going to happen and we're going to make a different kind of change. So Scott, I appreciate what you said there and I think that, that the enforcement side of this has to be addressed in a way that's either, you know, we're making it so there isn't any enforcement because there's no need for enforcement or it's actually going to get staffed and it's going to get enforced.
If I might, one of the things that I'll offer for the commission's consideration in, in that same vein of thought is whether we as a community want to be proactive or reactive. And that's an important distinction to make because they're very different from a staffing and administrative point of view. If you are reactive and you're basing it off of code complaints or inspection results or something like that, then you're responding to them as they're being brought to our attention and we do them kind of in, in the vein of them being brought forward. If we're trying to be proactive and going out and looking for things or taking a more, maybe a more aggressive approach in terms of how we're enforcing that, then we have to have a different structure in place. We have to have the staffing that's necessary. We have to have the prosecutorial means of taking it through and do we, and we have to make decisions on whether we want to be civil violations and therefore going through, you know, district court or whether we want to, we have to have an end game is my point. And we, and you need to know how you're going to carry that entirely through. And at this point, the city's, in full disclosure, the city's position has been more of responding to that and being reactive or responsive to those complaints. Where the codes have benefit in that construct is that having that language in there gives us the ability to point to something and say, you're, you're not consistent with this provision in that code. And if you don't have that language in there, then our ability to enact that or to carry that forward is quite a bit hampered. So it's a question of, of kind of values and process and, and which procedural means you want to pursue it. And, you know, we can, we can have that broader discussion, but as it stands right now, we are more responsive to those complaints that come up and look to, you know, first and foremost, educate and inform people about what the rules and requirements are. A lot of people will voluntarily come to compliance when they're aware of that. And in the event that they don't voluntary, then we'll, then we'll pursue it a little further.
All right. My, my clock reads nine oh five. I say we take a break and come back ready to go at nine 10. See you in a minute. See you in a minute.
Okay, I think it's time to get back to it. Um. I do think we'd be well served by getting through the whole list of fifteen tonight. So when I kind of re um refocus everyone on um trying to get out pieces of information you'd like to get staff aware of to either bring back to us later or to answer in the moment. So we got a lot of topics remaining and a lot of folks um. So if we need, if we need more time and we end up not getting through it tonight, that's that's okay. But if if we can get the pieces of information that we're looking for out of the table, I think we'd be well well uh better informed for our second meeting. So uh with that, any final questions, information requests on owner occupancy? Okay. Next one, set requirements or five set requirements for DAUs. Initial initiative initiative um has some requirements about touching an alley or touching a s- um two streets. Um, and this would remove uh those requirements, basically allowing um DAUs everywhere, much like we do with ADUs. Questions?
Mike, I have one. I've heard in the past a lot of the fact that we might be able to or should do something with a housing opportunity because our detached buildings are able to do such and such. And I guess we always do want to be moving forward, but I've never heard someone say, well, should we maybe review the fact that those original buildings shouldn't have been able to do that in the first place? Instead of allowing an accessory dwelling unit to therefore do something such as an accessory building, that maybe the new thing that should be looked at is that the accessory building shouldn't be able to do that in the future. I don't want that to happen, but it seems like maybe an error possibly could have been made in the past and to double up on that error, if that was the case, uh just could be another um an add-on to what should have been fixed already. I don't know if it's an issue, but it's just nice to make sure that we don't just continue with an issue that we could fix.
Mike? Hey, hey, Scott, could you add some clarity that? Maybe an example or just a little more? Just maybe a few more words on what you're, what that means?
Yeah, so say a detached building was right on a property line. And we say, okay, we're gonna allow DAUs to be built onto that accessory building because it is already there. And uh we already allow for it. It's in the code, so let's, because we already allow some other accessory buildings to turn into DAUs, we'll let this one also. And in that case, maybe it's not the issue that we should turn that uh property lined building into a DAU. It's the fact that the accessory building on this on the property line maybe shouldn't have existed in the first place. And in the future, we shouldn't allow for it. And you know, that could be due to privacy issues. It could be due to shading. It could be due to so many things we've heard from our residents. And if that is an issue, instead of doubling up on that issue, let's fix it. Does that make sense, Mike?
Chris?
Yeah, I I would just add here, um, this isn't just a a matter of consistency with what's allowed with detached accessory buildings, but also the fact that on a piece of property that have these criteria, um you are allowed to have an ADU on the piece of property. It's just limited to an attached ADU. So an ADU is already allowed on the piece of property to begin with. So whether or not it's attached or detached shouldn't make a difference. If you can add a detached building and meet all the standards, um all other standards such as open space, setbacks, height limits, parking and so on. Again, we're we're trying to achieve consistency. If it's it's if it's allowed in one situation, why isn't allowed in another situation?
Okay, other questions on citing of DAUs? Okay, the next five are a related block about the size of ADUs. Um, I'm just gonna summarize each of them and we'll kind of do an open house on any of these size topics. So um issue six, um currently a ADU must be um sixty-six percent of the main house or eight hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. Uh, the new proposal would allow um up to a hundred percent of the size of the main dwelling or a hundred, eight hundred square feet. Number seven. Converting a basement unit um after five years. Number eight. Um, the calculation of floor area method will match the type of zoning. So if you're doing an infill project, you would use infill definition floor area. And if you're doing a single family, you would use that corresponding one. Number nine. Um, a two hundred square foot bonus when the bonus area is a garage up to a total of a thousand square feet. Number ten. Oversized detached accessory buildings that were approved with a prior CUP can be converted to an ADU without an additional CUP. Provided. So um anything in that scope of sizing requirements? Go ahead, Jed.
Yeah, I think um on the first one, the idea of a ti- a small house having an equal sized ADU, I think that's a good thing. Um, I like that. Um, I do find it, maybe there might be some issue with if you've got a small house on a lot and you're allowed to make the ADU the same size, then how do you make it subordinate to the main house or does it really even matter? And so that would be kind of, I guess, my my question is when you have these smaller scale neighborhoods, is it a concern that the ADU be overcompeting with the primary residence? But um like, I'm not concerned about it personally, but I don't know if if you all are.
Chris?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, for example, if somebody had a six hundred square foot home on site, they wanted to build an ADU, eight hundred square feet. Uh essentially, the new building would become the primary residence at eight hundred square feet. The existing home would become the ADU. And we've had situations where that has or occurred. So uh somebody had a home that was less than eight hundred square feet and they decided to build a fifteen hundred square foot home on site and convert the existing home to the ADU, detached ADU. So um, that's already allowed. It's just a matter of if you have two homes basically equal in size, eight hundred square feet, the max one would be allowed.
Barbara?
So I'm looking at my neighborhood this afternoon and all of the houses on my block are built almost within, you know, about four to six feet on either side, edge to edge on the property. And if, I'm not the homeowner, but if my landlord decided he wanted to put an ADU in my backyard um and was at a hundred percent of the footprint um of this structure um in our backyard, it would also be edge to edge and it fill up the entire backyard. And so essentially taking away like green space, taking away the the place for the ground where you can absorb runoff and stuff like that. And if, and looking at my house right here, if my landlord did that, it may not necessarily be as big of a problem as if my neighbor next to me does that because his property is actually about two foot taller than mine. So all the runoff from his property would runoff into mine. And I'm thinking about those kinds of things when we're um getting a um how do we know when we're doing the permitting? Is it is the property, because I'm still new to this, the property fully it um looked at to make sure that that um we're not gonna be causing environmental issues for one from one property to the next for these things. I don't know if that was clear.
That's a great question. Um, you know, I think we have in many situations, um open space percentage requirements and also impervious surface percentage requirements. How do those apply to this situation?
Yeah, uh basically you have open space requirements. Um, at least thirty percent of the site must be maintained as an open space. Everybody, regardless of your building a eighty detached ADU or a garage or whatever, everybody is required to comply with the standards. And so we review uh new proposals against those standards. Um. So that's land use for open space setbacks and stuff like that. We also review them for um stormwater impacts and ensure that um, you know, downspouts and stuff are directed to stormwater, appropriate stormwater um facilities and such. And so everybody plays by the same rules in that respect. Um, so really, whether you're building a detached accessory building or a detached ADU, those rules will apply.
Um, I also remember there was some distinction between a, if you're, if you're adding a parking lot to facilitate the parking requirements, whether it's paved or gravel and there's like some percentage of um imperviousness that's needed to allow drainage.
Yeah, so um the code encourages low impact development practices so that uh pervious paving and pervious materials uh do not count as um I should say, yeah, pervious paving and materials and stuff like that, they don't count as impervious surfaces. And so um it's basically an incentive to incorporate low impact development practices into a development.
And and a a low impact development practice would be something like a driveway that lets that has that cracked weird concrete that lets water through and that kind of stuff.
For pervious paving, whether it's a patio or driveway or walkway, um you name it.
I had one more part to this question, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Um, uh so I'm also wondering about plumbing to like, you know, wastewater coming off of, you know, another unit. And I'm wondering like uh my neighborhood, the majority of it was built in the back in the nineteen seventies and I don't think any of the pipes, the infrastructure underneath is has ever been unearthed as far as I could tell from the from the paperwork that we had. And um and so the infrastructure underneath our block is pretty old and I'm wondering, you know, like if ten percent of our neighborhood, say, suddenly got, you know, ADUs, would the infrastructure be able to handle that? And and not just would like for pipes and stuff like that, but I'm thinking about school districts and the fire departments and and all of that kind of stuff. How do these ADUs, when they're, when they're being built, how does it contribute to the the neighborhood infrastructures?
Uh Blake, do you want to take that?
Sure. Um, so Barbara, you you heard earlier comments this evening about the fixture count and the permitting requirement that goes into that. So when we go through and we issue building permits, there's an opportunity to uh kind of go through and evaluate the amount of wastewater that's generated as a result of those fixture counts. And so part of the fee structure and analysis goes into that whole consideration. Uh, and so what happens is the city is responsible for taking the water and or sewer line up to the property line. So that's the main and the lateral that comes off of that. And then the private property owner is responsible for extending that from that meter point uh all the way to the to the existing home or the new ADU and then following plumbing code to meet all that. So if it's inadequately sized on site, then the property owner will have to upgrade it. And at the point at which it's a reaches the meter, then it becomes the city's responsibility, but they'll base all of that off of the fixture count and other uh plumbing code requirements.
So if the infrastructure on our current block isn't, won't accommodate, cannot accommodate uh for the city side of it can't accommodate, you know, ten percent additional housing in our area, the city will come in and fix that?
So the city will look at what the overall capacity of the existing line is. And if the if the development anticipated for that particular area, then they have to go through their capital improvement programs and and look to, you know, address those infrastructures. Or if you have new development that's occurring, they may extend the the line and upgrade the size of that. So it it gets evaluated during the permitting process on on whether or not that's gonna be a private requirement or if there's a city capital improvement project.
And so that could actually hold up the permitting process in a neighborhood if they're saturated with ADUs.
Typically, we try to address that in pre-application and understand what those impacts are so that perspective develop, you know, builders, homeowners, property owners, understand what those potential impacts are before they get to that permitting process.
Barbara, I want to share that um an anecdote I have of um I lived in a house in the southern sunny land area um a few years ago and um the city had a big problem with groundwater getting into the sewer line and overloading the capacity. The water runoff from all the yards. So the city, this is, this is a nineteen oh six house. The city came in and um relined the main sewer pipe from the inside with um the called trenchless digging. They basically were pull rubber through it and then inflate it. So it re makes a whole new pipe on the inside. Um, and so they did the entire Sunnyland neighborhood um and they didn't dig up the alleys to do that and they relined the pipes. But that was a a hundred year old pipe that was was getting.
You'll often hear that referred to as I N I or inflow and infiltration where you have existing water lines or sewer lines and there may be cracks or root intrusions or other things like that that are occurring. And as you get high rain events or stormwater coming in, it will actually flow into the sanitary sewer system. And so to Mike's point, they'll reline pipes and and do other uh ways to kind of control that uh so that you're not getting unanticipated waters into the into the sanitary sewer system.
Well, I mean, the waste management isn't the only uh infrastructure that would be affected by um, you know, ten percent additional housing. You're talking about um, you know, the roads and schools and things like that as well. And I'm wondering um how these these ADUs also bring in revenues for those uh needs as well.
So the there is a um a lot of that gets addressed through development impact fees and uh permit structure fees. So you have uh right now, we had the city has a um basically a tra- uh transportation impact here, traffic impact fee that goes to, goes into a broader bucket. So it's not like you pay your fee in the portion of the street outside your property gets paved. It goes into a larger uh, you know, city bucket. And then we do capital improvement projects and it kind of phases throughout the city in different locations to improve those roadways. And it's basically everybody paying a fair share for their utilization and maintenance of the roads. Those types of things, school impact fees, park impact fees, a lot of that's addressed through impact.
Uh, that that also makes me wonder um if a ADU is added to a property, um the next time the assessor, the county assessor comes through and does an adjustment on their regular cycle, do you typically see the property value increasing like relative to the value of the original house at, you know, some multiple, not not double, but a little, little bit under double. And so are they anticipating paying significantly more property tax going forward after the construction of an ADU? Are they anticipating paying significantly more property tax going forward after the construction of an ADU?
Yeah, I I would add that um, I believe that the assessor is um. To have access to our building permit information. So they know when new construction is occurring. They estimate what the added value of that new construction will be and that is. Added as an assessment to the for property tax purposes.
Uh, Mike, I think you're next.
So. After um. Spending a lot of time at the Evergreen State College having conversations very much like this and. Very much enjoying extremely long conversations. About this stuff. Um, I do have to ask this question, okay? Eight hundred square feet. Is is there a reason for that? And and I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna. Uh, not put anybody on the spot. Uh, when I was in. In graduate school, working on my master's degree in geography, oftentimes we were asked to. You know, like create an arbitrary boundary to some question we were asking and defend it. So. In a way, I don't understand this eight hundred square foot number and why it was chosen. And then after, if anybody wants to tackle that, it'd be great. If not, that's fine. It's want to get that out there. And then I also have a question on um, the oversized accessory buildings that could be converted. To a detached accessory dwelling unit.
What what's your question on the oversize?
Alright, so. What is an oversized accessory building?
Okay, I'll 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 tackle those. So basically, the eight hundred square feet, that that has been in our code since that that. Shows up in the original adoption of the nineteen eighty two zoning code. That was established long ago. That's been established as the appropriate size for an accessory building. And, you know, it's it's called an accessory building, but it's size wise, it may not be. An accessory building uh, under the height limit and such. Uh, it could accommodate a very tall barn, a one story barn. Um, that would be larger than the primary. House of that era. So uh, I don't know how far back that goes to the nineteen sixty nine code. Um. But it's at least established nineteen eighty two. That's what was established as the appropriate size for a detached accessory building. And that's what the city is based. Or detached accessory dwelling units. Uh, size on. So um. And then as far as what is an oversized detached accessory building? That is any detached accessory building that exceeds that eight hundred square feet and is. Reviewed through a special. Conditional use permit process to evaluate that for uh in potential impacts and mitigation.
Chris, thank you so much. I think. Both of us can acknowledge that we were young in nineteen eighty two and. I wasn't even born in nineteen sixty nine. So I think reviewing whether that number makes sense today. Is uh worthwhile conversation, not saying it isn't the right number, but I think it's something we should discuss. And then on the. The conversion of an of an oversized accessory. Building to a detached accessory dwelling unit. So theoretically, or I guess in reality. That building could be larger than eight hundred square feet. Is that is that true?
Yes.
So a detached accessory dwelling unit that was converted from an accessory building could be in uh, could exceed that eight hundred square feet.
The the way we have it written right now is uh, the accessory dwelling unit itself would still be limited to eight hundred square feet. So if you have a twelve hundred square foot oversized detached accessory building. Only up to eight hundred square feet of that could be converted to a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so that's that's how you get back to the answer. Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you so much.
Um, Mike, on the eight hundred square foot number, um. When we were looking at this in twenty eighteen, I was brand new on the commission and we had a. You know, we had a, we spent almost a year on this and the the packet, um, at the time, we had a whole matrix of other cities that that had ADU rules. Probably twenty or thirty of them. And each city had a variety of numbers, you know, from. Six hundred to twelve hundred to and everything in between. There's some nine hundreds, the whole a whole range. And um. We talked about that a lot and I think. Um, it, I don't remember exactly where we ended up. Why we ended up on eight hundred, but it's probably some combination of the accessory buildings themselves are eight hundred. So it's the same number. And it seemed to be a nice midpoint in the range of. What we had seen across different cities. So it might be actually interesting to dig up that old packet from twenty eighteen and look at. All those different numbers and kind of give you a baseline of of where we fall in the range of what. Um, maximums are are considered by other municipalities.
Well, I, you know, looking looking back, just, you know, my experience in this, it goes back to my undergraduate work. Uh, which is now, I'm getting older, so it's almost thirty years old now, but. You know, you you pick you pick a point and you make your argument about that point, right? So eight hundred, six hundred, one thousand, whatever the number is. That that you you've picked the point and you've and you've argued it and um, and it's accepted and and that's fine. Um, and the reason I'm even bringing it up is because. I have a lot of conversations with people about small houses, not not the the tiny house, which I. Totally beside the point, ridiculous, but. Small houses, right? If you talk to the typical person about a seven hundred square foot house. They will all tell you that's way too small, right? So if you're looking at an eight hundred square foot house. Most people would say that's far too small. So is it an accessory dwelling unit for a single person? Is it uh, is it solving a housing problem for more than one person? Is that eight hundred square foot number the right number? Is it based on? Uh, the available land uh on a typical lot in the city? Do we have a typical lot in the city? And, you know, it's it's a much, much deeper conversation, but I think that it's worth a a revisiting now. To see if that's the right number, that eight hundred square feet. Should it be smaller? I think some people could argue and rightfully so. They could argue as an accessory dwelling unit. To solve a problem for a certain part of our population. It could be and should be smaller. And some would say, no, it needs to be a little bit bigger. And I think that the the point of changing it to. Uh, changing the rules to that, you know, uh, that getting rid of the sixty six percent thing, right? That solves that problem, okay? But I I still think that we have to look at the number. And make sure that it's relevant to where we are today and not just today, but where we're going to be, you know, in the near future.
Um, so to facilitate the spirit of tonight, is there any information you'd like to see from brought back from staff that would help talk about that number?
I don't, I don't think so, because I would be really surprised if there was any literature that said. You know, X square feet is the right number. But I would like to have a conversation with the other commissioners to to decide if should it stick. And uh, and the reasons why it should stick or if it should be revisited and what that number might be in the future.
Chris?
Yeah, I I would just add that we we looked at that uh back in two thousand eighteen. I'd say that um. Uh, looking at the household size in Bellingham, that approximately seventy one percent of households consist of one or two people. Um, that the eight hundred square foot was determined to be appropriate. Uh, it accommodates. You know, we review many, many, many plans. Um, eight hundred square feet is typical of a two bedroom. Uh, apartment, uh, six hundred square feet, that's getting pretty tight to fit two bedrooms in. If we look at uh trying to accommodate a single parent with a child in a ADU, um. A two bedroom apartment is. In the range of what we're really looking to accomplish uh to accommodate uh one to two person households.
Okay, Jed?
Yeah, I made bridge two of the these items kind of together. Um, but there's the item on the bonus two hundred square foot. Or um, if you're going to have a garage or a covered parking. Um, someone calling in did mention, I think, you know. Possibly increasing that to four hundred. Um, I don't, I kind of think that, you know, seems seems reasonable. As much junk as people in Bellingham have to have in a garage for all the activities that we do. Um, and that may make the eight hundred square foot threshold that much more palatable, um, when you can put all your junk somewhere. Um, but in in terms of the height, I think, you know, we've we've got the twenty foot height limit and. You know, I I think some of the people who called in are on the design profession, which, you know, I. Pacific Northwest regional architecture tends to kind of be known, especially the more modern vein of it for having shed roofs. Um, shed roofs are interesting in terms of the height definition and that you take that to the peak. So it would be kind of difficult to do a carriage house type structure uh with a shed roof. And so that may be kind of where some people are pushing. For twenty five feet on that height, um, which I I would kind of second that. I think that's kind of um. You know, would be a nice form to to allow. Um, so uh, I'm curious, I guess, in terms of uh, kind of like uh. Maybe follow up to see if these other cities. Um, how they're how they're treating the height limitation and, you know, how how it might affect the carriage house structure. And and possibly limiting the type of design that you could do for a carriage house. Um. I mean, height definition one lets you get some, you know, leverage with a a gable uh roof or other or other forms like that. But the shed is the one that I think people are going to probably be pushing for.
Um, if we're talking about height for the moment, I just want to add on to that. I mean, I think. The feedback we've gotten from the public so far, um, and also the direct requests from from city council was twenty five feet and. I'm I'm be curious to hear more of a um justification for not opting to take what has been requested and stay with the twenty foot. Um, that can be a follow up. Barbara?
Yeah, I'm wondering um, if there, when we're talking about design and and all of that. Um, if there was some way, a pathway or something for maybe some preferences. In the the permitting for ADA com- or yeah, ADA compliant um structures. Um, and ADA, we've had a lot of people tonight um talk about and and. Uh, in, no, maybe not, but uh, we've we've heard a few people talk about uh moving uh elderly parents. Into these things and as someone who works with the elderly, wheelchairs, um, uh. Lift beds, um, hoyer lifts, special showers, all of these things are a requirement for a senior. To live outside of of some sort of senior housing type type structure, which if you're. Within a a price range bracket, um, you can't, you you make too much money to live in public housing. Or senior housing and but maybe not enough to be able to accommodate a house. So I'm wondering if there's some sort of. Pathway or preference that we can create to encourage people to make some of these ADAs. These these ADUs ADA compliant.
The only thing I know about that from my experiences, uh, you need more more square footage to accommodate everything you mentioned.
Not necessarily if you have one person, if you're building a unit for one person. I mean, the only thing that I would say that maybe you would need more space for is a ramp leading up to a house. But. Yeah.
So Barbara, there, under the current provisions, there's nothing preventing or precluding. Somebody from incorporating those in into the extent that they needed. Reasonable accommodations to address some of that. We do have a little bit of discretion in about evaluating that. ADA doesn't really become. A requirement that we can mandate until you get into. Commercial uh components. So then you get into multifamily and I think it's four units or more. So. Um, it it's an interesting proposition of whether or not we want to. Try to accommodate that in a more meaningful way. And if you have a suggestion on how to do that, we're certainly willing to. To entertain that. But right now it's uh, it's a voluntary provision.
Well, I was actually kind of thinking that if we, you know, there are some of these requirements that. I feel like maybe we shouldn't actually put forward. Um, but I would be willing to put forward the ones that I have reservations about. If the structure that was being built was ADA compliant. You know, um, you know, or or maybe even. If they're building, if they are specifically building a house that is going to be ADA compliant, that they could get a preference. Um, uh, permit for that specifically and that those, there's a certain amount of permits that could be. You know, dedicated to that. I mean, we have, we have, when we make the rules. You know, we're we're humans. This, these are not laws of nature. These are laws of humans. And we have the power to to encourage or find ways to make. An ADA compliant structure more palatable.
So I was just gonna tack on to Mike's point of like it it, you know, the square footage does. Um, that would possibly be the carrot that I could see is like maybe it's nine hundred square foot max if you do an accessible. Uh, dwelling unit. Um, the bathrooms would be bigger, the kitchen's probably going to be bigger just for your turn radiuses. Um, and some things like that. Um, that might be an incentive because some people will probably intentionally do these to Asian place. Um, so I would see there potentially with ADUs being more people. Potentially billing them upfront to be um accessible. And then the carrot could be a little bit of extra uh square footage.
Um. Okay, I'm doing another time check. We got uh fifteen minutes to ten. I'm kind of want to use that as a hard hard stop. Um, I'd like to get to parking and design standards as quick as we can to try and get. All the inquiries out on the table. We're going to have this kind of debate of the merits a little deeper at our next meeting. So. Um, well, well, any, if if you have any um other things we're skipping over. Those are welcome as well, but I'd like to move our attention for right now to parking, number thirteen.
Hey, hey, Mike, um, McCully here. Real quick, I want to double down on what what Jen just said and uh make sure that's part of a conversation. Thank you.
I do think uh there's an interesting um. Concept to look at around what would incentives look like um within ADUs for um. Affordability, which is a topic we haven't really gotten to, like if affordability is really hard to accomplish or legally fraught to accomplish. Much like we do with inclusionary zoning concepts, is there a potential for a deeded affordability with a bonus of? Some dimension, maybe a square footage. And as Barbara asked about um accessibility. Um, if accessibility is meets some standard or design meets some standard, is there a bonus we can offer? So we use that technique in other areas. What? Um, could be done with ADUs? Um, I had a question on parking. Um. The state. Mandate is. Um, no on, no off street parking requirement within a quarter mile of high frequency transit or something close to that. Um, our language is talking about a quarter mile of WTA high frequent. Transit routes, go line. Um, some TOD um concepts talk about transit stops versus transit routes. This language says routes, which to me is like the line on the street. So it would indicate like the whole street is the. The thing, the whole street of the route is is where we're using that one quarter mile from not just like the bus stops. Um, with. With big cities like Seattle, you're talking about light rail, you're going to have a lot bigger shed uh distance. Um, and that's a, that's a fixed. Uh, light rail station doesn't move around much. Um, bus lines over the years, um, routes can change. How are we thinking about? Um, what the routes are today, what percentage, uh, like what what areas of the city, it'd be nice to see a map are covered by the routes? And would it be a, would there be a benefit to. Broadening that out to just all bus routes or some other metric that is related but might be um. More permanent. Um, and we can, we can leave that and move on. Um, and we can, we can leave that and move on to, uh, Mike?
I, I just want to double down on that as well, um, because bus routes are, um, flexible on purpose and something that's a little less flexible as far as this rule goes would be, uh, would be a good idea.
Rose?
Yeah, I, I would just, uh, sorry, that's like Chris, sorry.
Yeah, I was just, just thinking sort of like the counter to that is to say, what areas of the city do you think that we have such, um, a like, uh, that there isn't available on-street parking or that like parking is really hard? I don't know if we have those sorts of maps. But my sense is that we, we really don't have much of a parking problem in, in Bellingham. And that by adding this requirement in the other areas, like it's great to remove the parking requirement within quarter mile. But then there's also this, um, opportunity to say there's plenty of on-street parking, um, where I am. And so I know that this is such a big issue that there are so many, um, minor modifications that come in on ADU permits on parking. And just to say, like, if, if we're issuing a lot of minor modifications, and most of our residential neighborhoods have enough parking. Would it be better to have, you know, should we just remove the parking requirement? And, and then to say if there's areas that are so bad, um, I think in terms of parking, we're gonna see other tools to address parking, uh, limitations.
Scott?
Parking wouldn't come up in conversation with neighbors if it wasn't bad in places in Bellingham. So there are many places in Bellingham where parking is a huge issue. And we know that there's issues with it in Seattle where they actually shuttle people from location to location just to get people their cars because the parking is so bad and we don't want that to, of course, occur in Bellingham. So yes, parking is an issue in many places, maybe not in your neighborhood, Rose, but in my neighborhood it is. And it's because of whether it be, uh, multifamily housing, which is fantastic to have, but the parking might get issue. Whether it be, uh, university students, the parking is an issue and it can't be just thrown out the window.
I would second that. Um, my neighborhood, um, only about a, less than a third of the houses have parking on the property. All the rest of it is all street parking. And if you've ever driven through the York neighborhood, my goodness.
Jed, anything else on parking?
So I think on, on a follow-up on that, I, I'm just curious on, on Barbara and Scott, where you live, would you be within that quarter mile of, of the bus route that would therefore not make parking required? Because I'm guessing that most of the places that have the biggest issues with parking are probably close to bus route. I, I don't know. I'm just like taking a wild guess. But, uh, I guess maybe as a follow-up for this would be interested to see a map that shows which areas would be exempt, um, from the, um, you know, the parking requirement for the ADUs.
And on the, on the, on the line of thinking around a map, I'm curious about a quarter mile. You know, that's the minimum the state's making us do. Uh, we could, you know, if we, if it's our priority, go higher. But in general, how far is a quarter mile? Thousand feet, twelve hundred feet, how many houses in from an arterial does that cover? Is it the first row of houses? Do you get three down the block? Like in general, like kind of just a mini visual of what a, what a quarter of a mile looks like and how many rows of houses that impacts? Okay, Mike?
Uh, another huge topic, I personally, uh, I'm a fan of zero parking requirements. However, there's a, there's a, a point in here about a two-hundred square foot, um, allowance. And that's one, that's essentially one parking space because it, you know, a nine-by-eighteen, that's what the city asks for so that, you know, it's less than two hundred square feet, that's two hundred square feet. So I think there's a lot of ways to get to this issue without, without a hard and fast requirement, right? So I think in, in those places of the city where, you know, the, the, the parking is, is literally maxed out. And I, I can tell you, like anecdotally, my own experience, looking around the city, working around the city, there are a few neighborhoods and a few locations in those neighborhoods where on-street parking, which is public, is, is full. It is. And there are a few places around the city where the on-street parking is full for the residents. And then it's full for people that park, especially around the downtown core, who work in the neighborhoods to go to work. So I don't think there's a hard and fast rule here, and I think we need to be very, very flexible. My own position is no parking requirement at all. And, and you know, you take the risk, you take the risk. If you wanted to build something, you take the risk that nobody wants it because they can't park the car there. But there is an allowance, you know, in this conversation for the extra two hundred square feet, which is, uh, that single parking space. I would ask a question if I could about, um, setbacks. And that came up earlier in public comment. Can, can someone tell me what's, um, what uses are allowed currently in the setbacks from, from any street, like not necessarily arterial, but just any street. What can I, what can I do some property, what can I do in a setback right now?
Yeah, your, your audio is, is
Your mic was cutting out there, Mike. I'm not sure exactly what you're asking about what uses are allowed.
I, I, I think I have an idea of what he's asking and, um, for the front setback, parking is not allowed in the front setback. The, uh, front setback is defined as the setback measured from center of the land of the street to the, um, to the, to the building. And, uh, so basically parking is not allowed in, in that front yard, but you can have a driveway across that. And, uh, a driveway and parking can be located in a side yard or rear yard. And of course you can have landscaping and things like that also.
So, so Chris, I can landscape it, I can put in non-permanent things, I can put in a garden. I just can't park the car.
Not in the front, the designated front yard.
Okay.
Okay, um, we're getting close to time. I want to leave space for the design standards. So, um, any questions or information you would like to request from staff on design standards? So the major theme here was, um, the current design standards, um, require the ADU, the DADU for both to match the look and feel of the house. And the, the proposal is to kind of relax that a little bit, but to still match the look and feel of the surrounding neighborhood. That's a approximate summary. Um, questions, information? Mike?
I have no shortage of questions. Who, who decides neighborhood character?
Rhetorical?
No, not at all. That's, that's a legitimate question. I mean, because when you look at, when you look at design standards, character, not just on, on the neighborhood, but on your own side of the street comes into play regularly. So who, who decides what that is?
Generally, when we look at a application, we, uh, have, and, and they ask for a deviation. And from something like this, we would ask them to write a, a photo montage of surrounding buildings immediately surrounding the proposal to see what that context and character is. And, um, it's up to the applicant, um, to justify that their proposal is consistent with what those surroundings are.
All right. Thank, thank you for that. And I, I, I hope I don't come across as critical, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out there. Again, food for thought in this whole conversation. For, uh, let's go back about fifteen years. I'd been hearing over and over and over about a particular house up in South Hill that did not meet the neighborhood character. And after hearing about this time and time again, I finally went up, I found the house. I stood in the front yard of this house and clearly it was a modern house, steel, concrete. It, it did not look like anything else in this neighborhood. Standing in the front yard and looking at the neighborhood, I found seven distinct housing styles, craftsmen, Italian aid, you name it. Seven very distinct housing styles. So when, when we are arbitrarily saying this is the neighborhood character, I think we have to be very, very careful and be able to justify that there is a character. Now, in that particular instance, the character that was consistent was age. That was it. The only, I, I, I don't know how you can say the eighth distinct style was out of character when none of the previous seven distinct styles that I could see from this, this property were in character. The only thing that was consistent across all eight was, or excuse me, seven, was they were much, much older than the one, uh, the yard that I was standing in. So, I, you know, when we come down to character and that conversation about character, and this came up in the, the, um, the, uh, the public comments is, you know, what is that character? What's the prevailing character? What's the, what, what are, what are things moving to? And cities are never static. You know, we, we are always and continually changing. So I think we need to be very, very conscious and careful with trying to lock in something that isn't relevant now or, and, and certainly won't be in the future.
So we're, we're at time. I want to save space for a couple more things. Um, can we keep it to just questions and information gathering? Rose?
Yeah, I just want to, um, double check that there's no other housing types or building types in single-family residences that go through design review. This is the only one.
Uh, this is the only one in single-family that goes through design review in standard, single-family. Infill housing, toolkit housing. Those do have design standards adopted with those. So they, they kind of inherently have a design review element to them. But otherwise, standard, single-family does not.
Scott?
In regards to parking real quick, uh, could staff by the next meeting, let us know about the legislation says one quarter mile of major transit stop. The other portions of the document say within a route. And so would it be stopper route because one is from the state and one is from the city? And the other one, is it as the crow flies or is it as walking? Because sometimes, once again, in the legislation, it says, uh, within walking. But in the city's text, it may not be clear whether it's as the crow flies or, uh, the walking route. Thanks.
Mike, your question?
Yep, question. Um, are we, are we talking about ADUs as, uh, affordable housing or just as a housing option?
At the moment, it's just a housing option. There is no requirement for affordability, but we can certainly entertain that conversation.
Yeah, that was one of the, uh, issues in the, um, council report that was mentioned that the council requests that was, um, not addressed. And, um, is that something we don't have capacity for at this time? Is that something that is legally fraught to accomplish? Is there a reason we're not, um, addressing that as part of this update?
I, I think part of what we have to discern if we want to go that route is what we mean by affordable. Um, are you talking about capital A affordable where it's subsidized or addressing sixty to eighty percent of area median income? Are you talking about small A affordable just by the nature of being a smaller supply of housing, it's more attainable by a broader segment of the community? So we'd have to kind of define what we mean and what our objectives are in terms of affordability. And, and begin to address it that way. So again, certainly happy to entertain that conversation, but it, it takes on a different tone.
Okay, I think I'm gonna call, okay, Jed, go to the last one. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the last thing, I mean, just kind of going on to what Mike was talking about is like the, the vagueness of the word area. You know, the architectural character of the area, like it's like you could be talking about the whole town. You know, like, oh, the area has a very diverse architecture, um, which, you know, I, I tend to lean towards the people who would want there to be flexibility here. So, um, I, I would, I would, you know, if I were arguing it, I would draw a really large circle around the area and I'd take lots of pictures of diverse things. So I'm just wondering how to kind of like enforce that word.
All right, I'm gonna kind of call timeout and say, um, I think this has been a great conversation. If you have detailed questions, you're encouraged to email staff in the next, um, week or two and get answers to some of these that, that maybe we glossed over or that you still have unanswered questions on. I'd also encourage you to come to, um, a work session on any topics you feel strongly about with like a concrete idea of what motions you would make for explicit changes to modify the recommendation before we move on. So we can continue to have the conver- these conversations. I think there's a couple, definitely a few points here where we're gonna have a meaty conversation. But I think at the end of an hour or two or three's more work, we should be able to say, I propose we change X to three, uh, and those types of, uh, proposals. So, um, with that, um, I'd like to wrap things up. Any, any last closing thoughts from staff, um, to help guide us to, um, our break between meetings?
Just wanted to have you decide if you wanted to hold the written record open until, I think we had talked about maybe Tuesday, the twenty-fifth?
Yes, uh, end of business Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, we'll accept, um, emails on this topic, please.
Okay.
Mike, you had one parting thought?
Yeah, totally. Just want to say thank you to everybody. I know this is a huge, huge conversation. It's happened so many times in the city and it's happened around the world for decades and it, it's almost like a never-ending thing. So, you know, for the folks that are sticking with it and especially staff that are doing all this hard work for us, I really appreciate you and, and, and thank you. And I know there's more work to do, but, you know, that's what we do. So thank, thank you.
I, I concur. I echo that. And I, I think, um, you know, my observation of having been to the first round and this round, the commentary we received tonight and the emails, um, it seems clear that, um, stuff has listened to a lot of write-off feedback and is, is judging kind of the situation out there. And, um, we're right in the range we need to be in. We got, we will, we'll debate a few tweaks and all that at the next meeting. But I think, um, this represents the general direction that it, it seems clear the community is interested in. So, um, excited to do more. Um, any other thoughts from staff? Otherwise we'll close.
Nope.
Okay, thank you all. Um, our public hearing and our meeting are both closed and adjourned.